Governor on March 16, 2020, suspending provisions of the Open Meetings Act and encouraging remote participation. This meeting is conducted by video conference. We will now have a roll call to establish quorum. Will the aldermen please make sure that their microphones are unmuted? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman LaSpada. Alderman LaSpada.
Here.
Alderman Hopkins.
Here.
Alderman Dowell.
Here.
Alderman King.
Here.
Alderman Hairston.
Present.
Alderman Sawyer.
Here.
Alderman Mitchell.
Here.
Alderman Harris.
Here.
Alderman Beal.
Yep.
Alderman Zadlaski-Garza.
Present.
Alderman Thompson.
Here.
Alderman Cardenas.
Here.
Alderman Quinn.
Here.
Alderman Burke.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Present.
Alderman Coleman.
Here.
Alderman Moore.
Present.
Alderman Curtis.
Here.
Alderman O'Shea.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Here.
Alderman Brookins.
Here.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Here.
Alderman Rodriguez.
I'm here.
Alderman Tavares.
Here.
Alderman Scott.
Present.
Alderman Secha Lopez. Alderman Secha Lopez. Alderman Maldonado. Alderman Maldonado. Alderman Burnett.
Here.
Alderman Irvin.
Here.
Alderman Telefiero.
Here.
Alderman Ruboyas.
Here.
Alderman Cardona.
Here.
Alderman Waggesback.
Here.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
President.
Alderman Austin. Alderman Austin. Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Present.
Alderman Vegas.
Here.
Alderman Mits.
Here.
Alderman Spazaro.
Here.
Alderman Nugent.
Here.
Alderman Vasquez.
Here.
Alderman Napolitano.
Present.
Alderman Riley.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Tony.
Here.
Alderman Gardner.
Present.
Alderman Capelman.
Here.
Alderman Martin.
Here.
Alderman Osterman.
Here.
Alderman Haddon.
Here.
Alderman Silverstein.
Here.
Alderman Secha Lopez. Alderman Maldonado. Alderman Austin. You're right, there are forty-seven members present.
There are forty-seven members present. We have a quorum. We will now have the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Florida. One nation, one God, indivisible, infinite, ever and ever.
God bless America.
Please remain standing. The invocation will be delivered by Pastor Donna Davis-Reed of the South Shore United Methodist Church. Pastor Reed.
Good morning, everyone. First of all, I bring greetings from South Shore United Methodist Church to all honorable elected officials gathered, especially Mayor Lori Lightfoot and the Alderman of the Seventh Ward in which South Shore United Methodist Church is located, Greg Mitchell, as well as Alderman Leslie Hairston of the Fifth Ward and Alderman Michelle Harris of the Eighth Ward, both of which are where many of our members live. And a thank you to Vance Henry for this opportunity to come before you this morning. Let us quiet our minds and center our hearts in an attitude of prayer. Lord, we come before you first to offer thanks for another day of life, another opportunity to behold the faces of loved ones, to hear the familiar voices of family, friends, and colleagues, another opportunity to assume the posture of dedicated civil servants who have gathered this morning from points all across this great city to do your work for the betterment of all those who live, work, and play here. We thank you for Chicago with its vast array of diversity of every kind. We pray for all the constituents of Chicago, from the youngest to the eldest, that represent a broad spectrum of needs to be met, especially as the city, state, country, and indeed the world responds to the coronavirus pandemic during these unprecedented times. Gracious God, guide and shepherd these your servants that they may exercise their leadership with wisdom and a heart of mercy and a mind bent towards justice. We confess that leadership in the political arena is often a balancing act between these two cousins, mercy and justice. But help those who are gathered here to seek that perfect balance, working together for the good of all Chicagoans. May your presence be felt and peace prevail throughout today's proceedings. We pray all this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Please be seated. At this time, we will have public comment. Mr. Clerk.
Council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of thirty minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for automatic review. The first speaker is Mr. Theodore Bourgaye.
Hey, everyone. Can everyone hear me? I've been completely out of work since the pandemic started, and I'm the only breadwinner of my family. I haven't seen a dime from the unemployment office since I filed in late March. We're unbelievably lucky to not be starving right now. But even if I were still employed, I would be paying over seventy percent of my paychecks on rent. I know there are hundreds of thousands of people in my exact situation, either severely rent burdened or broke, or both. It's not okay now, and it was never okay. People shouldn't be forced to bleed themselves dry in order to avoid homelessness, and homeless folks don't deserve to suffer and die. We need housing for everyone because it's common sense. Rent relief is just a step in that direction. I represent a union of almost a hundred people on the South Side, all of us being strangled by the same real estate investment corporation, the multimillion-dollar Antheus Capital, or locally known as Met Property Management. Despite Mayor Lightfoot's solidarity pledge, I think I speak for everyone in my union when I say that this should not be something landlords can just opt into. When our landlords are given an option, they have been and will continue to always choose their bottom line. The silence from our Fourth and Fifth Ward Aldermen is deafening as people from these districts are being harassed and kicked out of their homes for going on rent strikes during this pandemic. My fellow tenants are essentially spending for themselves. When the COVID-19 stay-at-home order is lifted, I can guarantee that evictions will be flooding the courtrooms of this city, and thousands more will never even see the court unless we do something about it. This pandemic has shown all of us that our governments do have the power to mobilize in an emergency. Bureaucracy and budget are not actually obstacles in the way of providing housing and medical care for everyone. It is the obvious injustices at play here that are going to be the most traumatizing for those of us who are unemployed, about to become evicted, or doing essential work. I'm calling to demand a rent freeze because it is the bare minimum of what folks need right now. We need to lift the ban on rent control. We need an end to illegal evictions. We need a standard of medical coverage and humane working conditions for essential workers. And we need to send prisoners home at a rate several orders of magnitude higher than we are currently. At the very least, constituents deserve to be treated like people, even if they can't help fund anyone's election campaign. In fact, those are the people that most need your help right now. We will remember what decisions you make this week.
Thank you, Mr. Bourgaye. The next speaker is Mr. Edward Johnson.
Good morning. My name is Edward Johnson, and I'm speaking to the ordinance reports today regarding rent relief for airport concessionaires. I am a supervisor at Big Bar Restaurant and Westdale Management Terminal Five at O'Hare. The restaurant is operated by Arias USA. I'm also a member of United here Local One. Westfield portfolio was valued at just over seventy billion dollars after end of last year. Before the COVID crisis, Arias employed about one hundred and eighty people in O'Hare T5. I was laid off in mid-March because of the COVID-19 crisis. Then on March 31st, Arias cut off health insurance for my coworkers and I. This means me and my son are now without insurance. It's heartless to for Arias to cut off access to healthcare for associates at O'Hare, especially on thousands of other concessionaire workers at the same airport are not being put in this situation. Arias is the only major concessionaire's company at O'Hare that has cut off workers' health insurance. The other two large concessionaires at O'Hare, Asmus Hosts and Hudson News, have both made sure workers can keep their insurance throughout this pandemic. Arias is the only major concessionaire at O'Hare where workers do not have O'Hare Health, the affordable quality insurance plan the majority of other airport concessionaires workers have. It's an arrangement for Arias to cut off my health insurance and send me COVID papers to tell me that they will offer me insurance for two thousand dollars a month for family, which I fall into, and seven thirty-one for individuals. I can't afford it. I have to pay rent and keep a roof over my kids' heads. It's shameful to Arias and by proxy Westfield will put the burden on someone to make a choice between your health and having a place to live for your family. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. The next speaker is Ms. Laura Compton.
Mayor Lightfoot and members of the council. I am honored to have the opportunity to speak with all of you today. I'm Laura Compton, and I am a ten-year resident of Chicago's Forty-third Ward, a member of Clean the North Branch, and most importantly, a mom. I am truly supportive of the work Mayor Lightfoot's administration and all of you are doing to keep residents safe during this pandemic. On Monday morning, I was balancing getting my kids ready for homeschool and my conference calls for work when our entire house shook. After confirming my family was safe, I checked in on our neighbors. Within minutes, our community learned that the shake was caused by an explosion at General Iron and that there was a fire on site. I made sure that my windows were closed, that all four of our air filters were on, told my neighbors to do the same, and told my kids they could not go outside for the day. While the explosion on Monday was big, my neighbors and I deal with the pollution, smells, noise, and explosions from General Iron on a daily basis. Even before the pandemic, it was normal, albeit shocking, to see General Iron workers walking our streets, Clyburn, Cortlandt, North, as well as our alleys, wearing PPE and gas masks while picking up fiberglass fluff and disposing it in this labeled metal canister. And on March 12th, 2020, as our city was making its initial plans to address the COVID-19 pandemic, a Chicago Department of Health Environment Inspector responded to a citizen's complaint and witnessed firsthand what we experienced. Inspection Log Number 11208389 states, "I could not fully inhale nor could I keep my eyes open at this location. When leaving the area after the inspection, I could feel my nose throbbing and chest discomfort." While I applaud and appreciate the swiftness of the Commissioner and Mayor Lightfoot to issue Monday's closure order on board General Iron, the order does not go far enough. It is a pause. It is not a shutdown. The city has again left the loophole for General Iron to repair, reopen, and pollute our community, as well as to pick up its EPA violating operations on the North Side and move it to the Southeast Side. It shouldn't have come to this, but Clean the North Branch submitted Resolution R2020358 calling on General Iron to be shut down until Phase Five of Chicago's reopening plan. As a neighbor of General Iron, I implore each of you to sponsor this resolution and tell this serial polluter and others like it, Matt Assault and Sims Metal, enough is enough. Why are residents being forced to propose legislative action to keep our communities safe? Let me be clear. General Iron has proven time and time again that they cannot and will not adhere to the rules and regulations the EPA in the City of Chicago sets.
Thank you. Ms. Compton, thank you very much for your comments, but your time has expired. The next speaker is Mr. Tim Compton.
Thank you, City Council and Mayor Lightfoot, for this opportunity. My name is Tim Compton. I'm a ten-year resident of Lincoln Park with two young children and CPS and a concerned neighbor of General Iron. While Monday's explosion may have drawn the attention of the city and news outlets, it really is nothing new. For residents like us who live under the cloud of General Iron, loud explosions, the constant sound of crunching cars, and of course, the smell of burning metal are nothing new. General Iron has no regard for the residents of the area or city permit laws. General Iron's permit allows it to work Monday to Saturday from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. It doesn't care. It starts its loud metal sorting operations at 6:00 AM and will commonly work past 7:00 PM. It worked past midnight last month until I had to confront them. I'd be happy to share the video of this if needed. On many days, the smell of burning metal can be nearly overpowering, especially on calm, warm summer days when all anyone wants to do is be outside, but we can't. I'd like to thank Mayor Lightfoot for allowing the city administration to cite General Iron for the multiple violations recently and truly enforce environmental laws that protect residents. Mayor Lightfoot's leadership in this matter is a model of what proper civil service is supposed to look like. The biggest reason General Iron is still here polluting and exploding is because some members of this council prefer campaign donations over residents' health. Aldermen Tooney, Zadinas, and Burnett have all received tens of thousands of dollars in donations from General Iron and all voted in support of this polluter. Alderman Burnett has even spoken out on behalf of the ownership of General Iron as he has broken bread with him. Alderman Hopkins has been the only alderman to introduce bills to curb General Iron down, and each time, the previous mayor and other aldermen have killed a bill or stood by and done nothing. It is a shame that residents are being forced to propose legislative action, but I urge all of you to sponsor Resolution 358. Now is the time to show us that you are here to protect our communities. General Iron simply doesn't care about nearby residents. It doesn't care about the safety of the facilities, and it doesn't care about the city of Chicago. The only thing General Iron cares about is its own profit. Polluters like General Iron have no place in the neighborhoods of Chicago. I ask that this council work with Alderman Hopkins and Smith on revoking General Iron's permit and help make our city healthier. General Iron should not be allowed to operate on the North Side, on the South Side, or anywhere in between. Permanently shut down General Iron now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Compton. The next speaker is Ms. Bonita Harrison.
Hello, Mayor Lightfoot, City Council members. My name is Bonita Harrison, a single mother and a housing provider, representing the fragile penny class, the working poor. I am a member of MBOA, and I appealed to you on April 24th council meeting. Housing providers are the people on the front line maintaining the main essential element of the shelter-in-place order, the shelter. We are sanitizing the common areas once a day according to the CDC standards. We are inside of the units with the tenants. If the tenants have COVID or not, we still must fix toilets, tubs, and everything else needed to have a habitable home. We are being devalued and dismissed in this pandemic. We don't make this crazy notion of a bunch of money. We make two hundred and fifty dollars per household. Once you skip on one month of rent, we are now in the red. I want to give an overwhelming appreciation to the tenants who are still making payments during this trying time. My tenant population, the working poor, have no subsidies in our buildings in the Inglewood community. My tenants were the first people to lose their jobs due to COVID, and I am more than empathetic to their situation. Now with the loss of rent, I have been forced to lay off five employees, cut the remaining to part-time, and two employees quit because part-time pay cannot support their families. I have pleaded with my lenders to allow me to forbear my mortgage, but because I do not have one government-backed loan, they flat-out told me no. I had one lender electronically withdraw funds from my account two days earlier then agreed because I had to take money from my family to put money into their account to cover the payment. I am being forced to go into my family's savings to try to salvage my property. I got pregnant at fourteen years old, and I thought I changed the trajectory of my life. The properties I have acquired were supposed to be my legacy. Now I'm facing foreclosure because the city and the government is refusing to create a fund to cover the rent to support the one thing you have asked the American people to do: stay at home. Stay at home to save lives. On March 11th, 2020, President declared the coronavirus a national emergency. Why haven't we been considered with a FEMA fund to protect a basic necessity: housing? We are asking for the second time. City of Chicago, Department of Family and Social Services, and Chicago Housing Authority, a comprehensive proposal to do two things in tandem: create a rental assistance fund, pay the property owners on behalf of the tenants to subsidize the rental overhead; provide emergency temporary housing vouchers for tenants who have lost wages due to COVID-19. The benefits housing providers will be able to maintain employees and maintain all expenses without the need to abate any taxes, utility payments, or forbear mortgages and rent. And it will stabilize the economy in our neighborhoods. I really appreciate our opportunity to speak with you today.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Our next speaker is Ms. Louangel Logan.
Good morning, City Council members and Mayor Lightfoot. I would like to talk about what is actually going on with the City Council and the mayor's office as far as making sure we stay safe and housed during the coronavirus pandemic because it doesn't look like much to this lifelong Chicagoan. You all are only meeting once a month instead of every two weeks as you normally would because I guess COVID-19 creates less of a sense of urgency than usual? And although there are some alders that are trying to make sure their wards have access to face covering, Chicago as a whole could still definitely use more than, excuse me, more that are openly available and freely accessible for them, and I would expect the mayor's office to be more dedicated to that task. But I don't see any evidence of that. There's also literally zero real rental relief or mortgage assistance being put forth by anyone outside of the one thousand dollars for two thousand people and an agreement with a few banks not to charge late fees on late mortgage payments. The mayor's office could have actually worked on something real with the banks since obviously there is some type of working relationship with them, but Mayor Lightfoot, I guess you couldn't be bothered with that. And on spite of the eviction protections offered by the statewide stay-at-home order, Chicagoans don't have any guarantee that they won't lose their homes when it's lifted. The mayor's office could have supported the eviction protection ordinance put forth by some of the aldermen last month, but now it's just sitting in some committee. Mayor Lightfoot, your office recently even pulled back support for what could have been a solid just cause eviction ordinance by the Chicago Housing Justice League that would have prevented landlords committing leases without reason after you claimed you supported it for months. I mean, what exactly are you all doing to make sure Chicagoans don't get sick and lose their homes? This literally looks like a bid to gentrify the entire city in one pandemic silo swoop. You people praise essential workers like grocery shoppers and lower-paid healthcare workers, saying they're heroes, while leaving them to wade through a mountain of rental debt and possibly be evicted from their homes? That is not okay. In three years, all of you will be seeking reelection. And no, you will not scare away lifelong Chicagoans such as myself, no matter how much you try to care to the business people you hope will donate to future campaigns. Unlike other issues that may get swept under the rug, COVID-19 is a deadly global pandemic. We will remember all of those we lost, all of those living with the long-term health effects of the virus, and we will remember who supported us and who did not. We are not playing as acute campaigns, Logan, but so far, it looks like that's all most of local Chicago government has been doing. Get to work and get us some real rent relief and financial assistance and resource assistance we can use right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Logan. The next speaker is Mr. John Wilmack.
Good morning. Thanks for the opportunity to speak today. My name is John Wilmack, and I live with my wife and daughter in the Ravenswood neighborhood. My wife and I bought our first investment property in Belmont Craigan in 2016, and we currently manage apartments all on Northwest Side. Last year, I formed the Northwest Side Building Coalition to bring together housing providers, service providers, and community groups to share information on best practices and advocate on issues impacting our industry and our communities. I also serve on the board of the Neighborhood Building Owner Alliance. My wife and I have assembled a team of people to help manage our properties. Jose, a father of three, was a new resident that moved into one of our apartments in 2017. He now heads all of our maintenance and renovation work and manages anywhere from two to six contractors. Maritza, a mother of four girls, started out cleaning the common areas, and now she also works with me in the office doing accounting work, and she's studying to get her leasing agent license this summer. The three of us work closely together. Me hacen burla por mi español, pero Maritza a veces trae ceviche, entonces no me quejo. Despite the global pandemic, our work continues. Last Thursday night, two of our basement apartments flooded for the first time. The next day, we relocated our residents to a couple of empty apartments we had. Two of their mattresses were damaged, so we bought them new ones from a store across the city and delivered them to their temporary apartment. This week, our entire team was redirected to fix the plumbing issue and make the repairs needed to their apartments. The residents will move back in by this weekend. This has taken a lot of coordination for our residents, for ourselves, but we work together to get it done. Another of our residents is a single mom with three kids. She broke her lease with us to move in with her sister so they could save on rent, homeschool their kids together, and balance their part-time jobs. She only gave us two weeks' notice and noticed a month of rent, but we told her not to worry about it. It took a few weeks to rent her apartment, which led to further loss of rent, but we moved a new family in last week. We can offer this flexibility because most of the other residents are paying their rent, for now. Another resident was working as a baggage handler for United. She was let go early on, then found another job at a U-Haul store, and then was let go again. She's now working in logistics at a warehouse. She's a month and a half behind on rent, but she's working hard to make ends meet, and she continues to make partial payments. In accordance with the mayor's solidarity pledge, we're giving her time to get caught up. I tell you all of this because a lot of other housing providers operate in the exact same way, doing what we can to work with our residents through challenging times. I hope you recognize the vital role housing providers play to provide safe and secure housing to our residents and neighbors and view us as partners when considering how to tackle the city's housing challenges and policies in the coming days. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilmack. The next speaker is Mr. Alex Meeksor.
Hi, thank you very much. I'm a mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Alex Meeksor, and I am representing the American Heart Association and American Stroke Association here in Chicago. You know, I'll try to be brief, but you know, the mayor said it well a few weeks ago when you said that what we are facing right now is a viral pandemic that is essentially preying on the underlying epidemic of chronic disease throughout the city. You know, we know that chronic disease such as hypertension, such as stroke, such as heart disease is spread throughout the city, but its impacts tend to fall hardest on those who have trouble accessing regular care. Chronic disease generally can be managed, but only with the help of regular clinical care. In this stay-at-home environment we find ourselves in, telehealth and telemedicine do help. They do provide options to manage chronic disease, but only for those who have the access to that care, the wherewithal, to access those services. If we're looking at hypertension, which afflicts some six hundred thousand Chicagoans, in order to manage hypertension, you need to have an at-home blood pressure cuff. Now, many folks have been able to buy those on their own, but far too many do not and have not, and their insurance will not cover it, leaving them with the choice of either leaving their home, seeking outpatient monitoring and treatment of their hypertension, which puts them at risk for contracting COVID. And remember, these are folks that are at high risk for bad outcomes from COVID if they do contract COVID, or staying at home and risking heart attack and stroke and all the medical emergencies that hypertension can lead to. So what we are proposing is a city-backed program that would help provide blood pressure cuffs for these low-resource but high-risk individuals throughout the city that need to be able to manage their hypertension, manage their chronic diseases at home, need to be able to access some of these telehealth services that have been made available but, you know, are inaccessible to them without the proper tools to do so. We at the American Heart Association, as well as our good friends at FQHC throughout the city, as well as our friends with other, you know, community organizations, health-focused organizations, stand ready to work with the city, ready to work with the Public Health Department to try to get a program like this up and moving. But I think if we can do this, it would both have a beneficial impact in reducing the COVID infection rate by keeping folks at home, reduce the COVID mortality rate by keeping those high-risk individuals from having to expose themselves to COVID, and also help address some of our longstanding health disparities, especially with regard to chronic disease that have led to a life expectancy gap that have led to so many of the health equity problems that predated COVID and unfortunately will certainly be here long after COVID is, you know, thankfully, one day in the interview, Mayor.
However, your time has expired. The next speaker is Mr. Jay Johnson.
Good morning. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you this morning. My name is Jay Johnson. I've been actively involved in real estate management.
I've been actively involved in real estate management and development in Chicago for 30 years. As a housing provider, I understand that we are living through unprecedented times. We are all struggling to deal with this crisis. Most housing providers are small businesses that are part of the fabric of our neighborhoods. You see us on a daily basis at our buildings, managing our properties with the goal of maintaining quality housing. In today's environment, this is particularly important and difficult. Rent pays expenses directly related to the operation of the building. This includes real estate taxes that pay for our schools and city services, utilities like water, building repairs, mortgages, and payroll for maintenance staff and managers. Those employees who work in our buildings are your neighbors. They're there to help provide quality housing and contribute to the neighborhood, just like all of us. Neighborhood Building Owners Alliance, or NBOA, is comprised of neighborhood housing groups like the Rogers Park Builders Group that not only invest in bricks and mortar, but the children and adults that live in our neighborhoods. For example, in Rogers Park, we developed a five-year plan with Sullivan High School that resulted in our group building out two classrooms, a life skills room for young people with autism and other developmental challenges. We restored a library, restored musical instruments that allowed a music program to be developed, and funded a theater program. In cooperation with the leadership of Sullivan High School, this investment was a small part of a major renaissance of a school that needed community support. We do projects like this to help young people in our neighborhoods have a better education and life. Recently, we raised $12,000 to fund a local nonprofit that assists refugees with emergency needs in this time of crisis. Rogers Park Builders Group is not unique in this type of endeavor. Many of the housing provider organizations that are part of NBOA across the city are doing similar things to help our neighbors on the southwest and north parts of the city. In closing, I want to leave you with this. We are housing providers that are providing homes to our neighbors. We are partners with the community that work to create, maintain safe neighborhoods. Together, we can solve the problems that our city faces. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. The next speaker is Mr. James Sanders.
Greetings. Thank you. Greetings, council members and Mayor Lightfoot. I'm James Sanders. I appreciate your time here today. Today, Alderman Andre Vasquez is introducing the Emergency Meetings Act, and I want to speak in support of this ordinance and ask for its swift consideration and passage. Under this ordinance, the currently monthly meetings scheduled would be changed to convene City Council on a bi-monthly basis. Chicago Municipal Code already calls for council meetings on the second and fourth Wednesdays of every month and was written far before Zoom and virtual meetings were a possibility. During this crisis, it is especially important that our elected officials are meeting regularly in order to consider and pass the real recovery that working families deserve. What we need is a more attention, involvement, and a robust democratic oversight process, especially now. What we are getting instead is a unilateral power grab. I'm concerned with how the mayor is using COVID-19 to give herself more power. This is important to me because so far, the mayor's response has included only a solidarity pledge, asking banks and landlords to take pity on renters and set a small one-time grant program for 2,000 people, to which 86,000 people applied. This response is wholly insufficient, and we need our lawmakers to get to work on the real and bold relief that renters and working families need. Mayor Lightfoot and her administration are attempting to seize more power with limited or no oversight during this crisis. Her emergency powers ordinance, the demolition and then continued at the Hillco site, are the latest signs of this happening. City Council must meet more regularly to ensure co-governance and proper oversight and push for the robust solutions that we need. Not more unbinding solidarity pledges with the very corporations and businesses that are trying to evict us while receiving the bulk of stimulus aid. So I ask that we support the Emergency Meetings Act. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. The next speaker is Ms. Carolyn Givens.
Ms. Givens is not here.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mr. Alan Nash.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Alan Nash, and I work with a small Southside minority-owned business, and I've worked with several of the aldermen handling awards, electronics, recycling events. Honorable Mayor and Council, I'm asking that you promptly, for the physical and mental benefit of all of Chicago, that you promptly reopen Lakefront Harbor and other public amenities and provide the following plan outlined to safely, sensibly, and even economically produce revenue. It's based on systems, planning, technology, and staffing that already exist but are shuttered and available. The use of scheduled timed ticketing is a key to controlling allowable access. You can promote and accept corporate and organizational endorsement or underwriting by area, process, or amenity, much like the Chicago Marathon, 10K, Bike to Drive, and other large crowd venue events. You can establish a facility use permit or an e-ticket for scheduled timed use, i.e. use on an existing online reservation platform to permit up to four people for, say, three hours for $5 per person. It's similar to tea times or museum exhibits. It provides quick and immediately flexible government control for the best allowable number of people. The permit is for scanned entry and exit, just like parking or Spot He Row. The scanned exit is late, there's a $20 fine charged, just like the Illinois tollway, and/or a period of denial of future permit for, say, 30 days. Provides simple, flexible control in number of people at any given time and by area. For the underserved community who may not have online access, single permit booths are set up at food banks or other visited facilities for free permit issuance. Entry and exits will be manned by experienced employees, Wrigley Field for Northside, United Center, Soldier Field for Central, and Guaranteed Rate Field for Southside. It provides trained and experienced personnel to scan tickets, security to replace Chicago police, and management for processing. Secondary personnel would ensure masks and pass out individual chest banners, which would be worn while on the premises, providing quick and easy monitoring by security and police, just like any other sporting event. This immediately relieves the Chicago Police Force from babysitting entrances, and they can, these valuable personnel can then be used for enforcement of other meaningful police work. Permits can easily be designated by areas, activity, or facility. Path for walking, biking, beachfront for sun, volleyball courts with four-person maximum, fishing permits, harbors, golf courses, and tennis courts. Eating facilities can be open for takeout only. This methodology can and should be extended to all parks, the 606, and other public facilities. Plan provides ready jobs, easy access.
Thank you very much for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our final speaker today is Ms. Stacy Sinaski.
My name is... Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Stacy Sinanski. My family and I live approximately 1,200 feet from General Iron and have for the past 16 years. Our home has been rattled by the explosions at General Iron. We are downwind of toxic fires that have occurred. We have endured the traffic jams caused by the massive trucks lining up along North and Kingsbury Avenues. We have been frequently disturbed by the noise and smells emanating from General Iron. We've had molten plastic rain down on us while taking a walk in the neighborhood. But most significantly, every single day, we are exposed to the debris that is spewed from General Iron. We cannot open our windows. When we do, the window sills, the shutters, and all the surfaces in the room become layered with a black soot. And believe me, this is not dust. This is a granular, black, metallic sediment. It clings to everything and has the texture of fine sand. Bits of it actually stick to a magnet. Our furnace filters need to be changed frequently and are completely blackened in two months. Our deck and deck furniture is covered in this dirty, black particulate residue. Even the flowers that grow are coated in this material. I love to garden, but I would never consider growing anything to eat. It is way too filthy. Every day, when we come and go from our homes, sit on our decks, play in the courtyard, barbecue on our patio, and now, while we're home, working, and studying, this ash is being expelled into the air. Our home is one of 19 townhomes in a complex. There are older individuals, as well as families with young children and expected mothers living in this community. As a physician, I worry about the health of the residents in our neighborhood. As one example, there are children with asthma, which is exacerbated when the rancid air drifts from General Iron. My neighbors and my family are being asked to stay home to protect ourselves and our lungs while General Iron has been allowed to continue to pollute our homes. We have dealt with these issues for years, but now, in the midst of a global pandemic from a virus causing severe respiratory illness, our community is urging the City Council to permanently shut down General Iron so we actually can be safer at home. Again, please close General Iron as it lacks the federally required controls and it creates an unsafe environment for the City of Chicago. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sinaski. The time allotted for the public comment period has expired.
Includes the public comment. Let's move to communications. Mr. Clark?
A series of communications from our Honorable the Mayor to the Honorable the City Council of the City of Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmitted with an ordinance authorizing an allocation of NOF funds to the InterCity Muslim Action Network. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Budget Director, I transmit here with a Fund 925 Amendment. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of... terminate tenancies and associated relocation assistance. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Rules. Two committees call the matters referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Second. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Family and Support Services, I transmitted with an ordinance authorizing the extension of an agreement with the Cook County Workforce Partnership. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to Committee on Workforce Development. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Housing, the Commissioner of Planning and Development, and the Commissioner of Buildings, I transmitted with, together with Alderman Burnett, Ken Martin, Osterman, and Tony, an ordinance amending various provisions of the Municipal Code regarding affordable dwelling units. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to a joint committee comprised of the members of the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, and the members of the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmitted with appointments to the Board of Trustees of Community College District Number 508. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to Committee on Education and Child Development. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmitted with appointments to various special service areas. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to Committee on Economic, Capital, and Technology Development. The Honorable Anna Ann Valencia, City Clerk, hereby informs the City Council that the following documents were filed in our office relating to the respective subjects designated as follows. An amended and reissued Department of Health Order Number 2020-2 regarding duties of hospitals and other congregant facilities. Also, an amended and reissued Department of Health Order Number 2020-3 regarding continuation of Governor Pritzker's stay-at-home order and public closures. And the Department of Health Order Number 2020-4 standards and guidelines regarding medical data sharing requirements. Also placed on file was the Department of Health Order Number 2020-6 regarding approved list and public awareness of COVID-19 testing facilities. And the Department of Health Order Number 2020-7 regarding reporting requirements for short-term residential rental intermediaries. The Honorable Anna Ann Valencia, City Clerk, also informs the City Council that all those matters which were considered by the City Council at the regular meeting held on February 19th, 2020, and which were...
Peter, could you go back? I like to refer those to rules, the previous ones.
The matters that were placed on file, Alderman?
Oh, not the ones on file? I thought...
Placed on file with us.
Okay.
The Honorable Anna Ann Valencia, City Clerk, hereby informs the City Council that all those matters which were considered by the City Council at the regular meeting held on February 19th, 2020, and which were required to be published in book or pamphlet form or in one or more newspapers, were published in pamphlet form on March 18th, 2020 by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the Journal of the Proceedings. City Clerk Valencia also informs the City Council that all those matters which were considered by the City Council at the regular meeting held by a video conference on April 22nd, 2020, and which were required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form or in one or more newspapers, were published in pamphlet form on April 24th, 2020 by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the Journal of the Proceedings. The Honorable Anna Ann Valencia, City Clerk, also transmits here with the following miscellaneous communications and reports requiring City Council action. A call for suspension of operations of General Iron Industries, Inc., during COVID-19 pandemic until Phase 5 framework for reopening Chicago is complete, which is referred to Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy.
Rules.
Two committees call the matters referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Also, zoning classifications of particular areas, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. And claims against the City of Chicago, which are referred to Committee on Finance. And the Inspector General's nomination of Deborah Whitesburg as Deputy Inspector General for Public Safety, which is referred to Committee on Public Safety. Your Honor, that concludes communications.
Next is the committee reports. Any alderman wishing to speak on an item should use the teleconference raise hand function to be recognized. First up is the Committee on Finance. Chairman Wegas back.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President and members, reporting for the City Council's Committee on Finance, which met on May 18th, 2020. Our first item is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of up to $24 million in multifamily program bonds, the execution of a funding loan agreement, the issuance of tax increment financing tax credits, TIF, and conveyance for the Emmett Streets Apartments located at 2602 to 2638 North Emmett Street. This item was approved by the committee by voice vote. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move to concur with the recommendation of the committee by roll call vote.
Mr. Clark, please conduct a roll call.
Alderman Lisbada.
Aye.
Alderman Hopkins.
Aye.
Alderman Dowell.
Aye.
Alderman King.
Aye.
Alderman Hairston.
Aye.
Alderman Sawyer.
Aye.
Alderman Mitchell.
Aye.
Alderman Harris.
Aye.
Alderman Beal.
Yep.
Alderman Sedloski Garza.
Aye.
Alderman Thompson.
Aye.
Alderman Cardenas.
Aye.
Alderman Quinn.
Aye.
Alderman Burke.
Aye.
Alderman Lopez.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Curtis.
Aye.
Alderman O'Shea.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Brookins.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Aye.
Alderman Duvaris.
Aye.
Alderman Scott.
Aye.
Alderman Sichu Lopez.
Aye.
Alderman Mordero.
Aye.
Alderman Burnett.
Aye.
Alderman Irvin.
Aye.
Alderman Telefiero.
Aye.
Alderman Ruboyes.
Aye.
Alderman Cardona.
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Wagasback.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Aye.
Yay.
I'm sorry, Alderman, what did you want to vote?
Eleven o'clock.
Aye.
Alderman Austin. Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Yes.
Alderman Vegas.
Aye.
Alderman Mitz.
Aye.
Alderman Spazado.
Yes.
Alderman Nugent.
Yes.
Alderman Vasquez.
Aye.
Alderman Napolitano.
Yes.
Alderman Riley.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Tony.
Aye.
Alderman Gardner.
Aye.
Alderman Kappelman.
Aye.
Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Osterman.
Aye.
Alderman Haddon.
Aye.
Alderman Silverstein.
Aye.
Alderman Austin. Your honor, we have forty-nine yays, no nays.
Madam President?
Yeah. Alderman Daly Thompson for the motion for reconsideration.
Yes, Madam President, I motion reconsider the last vote.
All those in favor of reconsiderate reconsidering the last vote signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay.
No.
Motion fails. Chairman Wagasback.
Thank you, Madam President. Item two is the appointment of Jessica Drostejigan as a member of the Chicago Community Catalyst on board. Ms. Drostejigan spoke to the committee. The item was approved by the committee by voice vote. And if no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the committee on finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. Just keep it on the line.
Item three is an ordinance authorizing the city of Chicago to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District for certain renovations at Black Hawk Park located at 2318 North Laverne Avenue. This item was approved by the committee by voice vote. And if no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the committee on finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number four is an ordinance authorizing the city of Chicago to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District for certain renovations at Avondale Park located at 3516 West School Street. The aside, this item was approved by the committee by voice vote. And if no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the committee on finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
I'm sorry, is somebody asking to be heard on this matter? All right, hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, item number five is an ordinance authorizing the city of Chicago to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District for certain renovations at Clarendon Park located at 4532 to 34 and 4538 North Clarendon Avenue and Alderman Kappelman's ward. The item was approved by the committee by voice vote. If no one wishes to speak on this matter, I move passage by the first most favorable favorable roll call vote of the committee on finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
I believe that Alderman Kappelman would like to be heard on this matter. Alderman?
Thank you, Madam President. This particular field house has over $10 million worth of code violations that needs to be desperately repaired. And it senses tracked with a very high poverty with with a fair amount of violence. So I I am delighted that we can now go towards the path of getting this repaired. The neighborhood kids deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Chairman Wagasback, please renew your motion. You are on mute, sir.
Madam President, I again move for passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of this committee on finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you. Item number six is an ordinance authorizing the city of Chicago to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District for certain renovations at Chopin Park located at 5400 West Cornelia Street and 5400 West Roscoe Street. This item was approved by the committee by voice vote. And if no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the committee on finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item seven is an ordinance authorizing the city of Chicago to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Board of Education for certain redevelopment at Lyman A. Budlong Elementary School located at 2701 West Foster Avenue. This item was also approved by the committee by voice vote. And if no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the committee on finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number eight is an ordinance authorizing the city of Chicago to enter into and execute a redevelopment agreement with Portage Park Capital LLC regarding property at 3611 to 3657 North Central Avenue. The item was approved by the committee by voice vote. And if no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the committee on finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item nine is an ordinance authorizing intent to issue 100 million in general obligation debt obligations by the city and appropriations connected therewith. The item was approved by the committee by voice vote. If no one wishes to speak on this matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the committee on finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, item number ten is regarding monthly settlements through the law department. These will be placed on file with the clerk. Items eleven and twelve consist of authorizations for the payment of various small claims against the city and denials of payment of various small claims against the city. If there is no objection, I ask that these items be placed on the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item thirteen, we have on items thirteen A through C. Item A is an order authorizing corporation counsel to enter into and execute a settlement in the case of Richard Hayes versus the City of Chicago and Sergeant Khalil Mahabin in the amount of 2.25 million dollars. And Madam President, B is Artist Aquino versus the City of Chicago and Antonio Robinson in the amount of $750,000. And item thirteen C is Pierre Green versus the City of Chicago in the amount of $300,000. Now for items thirteen A through C, I move for passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the committee on finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider, with the exception that Alderman Dowell, Mitchell, Quinn, Lopez, Moore, Tovaris, Raboyas, Nugent, Spazado, Napolitano, Riley, and Gardner wish to be recorded as voting no on item thirteen C. If anyone else wished to be recorded as voting no.
Alderman Curtis.
Like to be recorded, no, for thirteen C.
Alderman Curtis, also.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the first one. Who was the first person?
Alderman Cardona, voting no for thirteen C.
All right.
Alderman Curtis, thirteen C.
Okay.
Madam President, this is Alderman Lopez.
One moment, sir.
Thank you.
Are you voting? Are you? You've already voted no. I just wanted to make sure that we've got the no votes. I understand that you want to speak to this matter.
Alderman Beal votes no.
I like a roll call on this matter. Be easier.
Well.
I don't think so. Mr. Clerk, there's been a request by Alderman Lopez to have a roll call vote. I think we have to do these Chairman Wagasback, item by item?
So we would, we have three separate items there. Hayes, Aquino, and Green. Alderman Lopez. All right, Madam President, are we calling roll call on each separate one then?
Alderman Lopez, a point of information. I understood your request to be for a roll call on item C, but please clarify.
Yes, Madam President, the request for roll call is for item C only. So Chairman Wagasback can proceed with A and B as normal.
Okay, so let's separate those out. My understanding is that we have a list of people who want to be recorded as no on C. But as to A and B, the motion is for the vote to be recorded as the first most favorable vote of the committee on finance and the unsuccessful vote on the motion for reconsideration.
That's, that's my understanding, Madam President.
Hearing no objection as to A and B, so ordered. As to C, Alderman Lopez has sought a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Lispada.
Aye.
Alderman Hopkins.
Aye.
Alderman Dowell.
No.
Alderman King.
Aye.
Alderman Hairston.
Aye.
Alderman Sawyer.
Aye.
Alderman Mitchell.
No.
I'm sorry, Alderman Mitchell?
No.
Alderman Harris.
Aye.
Alderman Beal.
No.
Alderman Sedlowski Garza.
Aye.
Alderman Thompson.
Aye.
Alderman Cardenas.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Alderman Cardenas?
I said aye.
Thank you. Alderman Quinn.
No.
Alderman Burke.
Aye.
Alderman Lopez.
No.
Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
No.
Alderman Curtis.
No.
Alderman O'Shea.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Brookins.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Aye.
Alderman Tovaris.
No.
Alderman Scott.
Aye.
Alderman Sichu Lopez.
Aye.
Alderman Modano. Alderman Modano.
I don't know what I didn't say.
Alderman Burnett.
Aye.
Alderman Modano, aye.
I'm sorry, Alderman.
Alderman Modano, aye.
Alderman Modano votes aye. Alderman Burnett.
Aye.
Alderman Irvin.
Aye.
Alderman Telefiero.
Aye.
Alderman Raboyas.
Oh.
Alderman Cardona.
No.
Alderman Wagasback.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Aye.
Alderman Austin. Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Aye.
Alderman Vegas.
Aye.
Alderman Mitz.
Aye.
Alderman Spazado.
Oh.
Alderman Nugent.
No.
Alderman Vasquez.
Aye.
Alderman Napolitano.
No.
Alderman Riley.
No.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Tony.
Aye.
Alderman Gardner.
No.
Alderman Kappelman.
Aye.
Alderman Martin. Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Thank you. Alderman Osterman.
Aye.
Alderman Haddon.
Aye.
Alderman Silverstein.
No.
Your honor, there are thirty-three yays, sixteen nays.
The, the motion passes. Chairman Wagasback.
Thank you, Madam President. One note before I end the committee report. Former Chairman Burke also pointed out on the eighteen.
I apologize, Chairman. Let me go to Alderman Daly Thompson on the motion for reconsideration.
I, yes, Madam President, motion to reconsider the vote. Next time I'll raise my hand, I'm sorry.
All right, no, 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 that's, that's, I should have called upon you. All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
No.
The nays have it. The motion, the motion for reconsideration is denied. Now Chairman Wagasback.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to note before I end the committee report that former Chairman Burke also pointed out that May 18th was the 160th anniversary of President Lincoln's party nomination at the Wiglam around the corner at 191 North Whacker. A little history note. And with that, I conclude the report of the committee on finance from May 18th. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Chairman Wagasback. The committee on budget and government operations, Chairman Dowell.
Yes, thank you, Madam President and members of the city council. Reporting for your committee on the budget and government operations, which held a meeting on May 13th, the committee recommends passage of the following items: A substitute ordinance concerning an amendment to the annual appropriation ordinance year 2020 within Fund 925 for the Department of Public Health, Department of Family and Support Services, and the Chicago Police Department. Item number two was an ordinance introduced by Alderman Brendan Riley of the 42nd Ward approving the transfer of funds within the city council Legislative Reference Bureau for year 2020. And the third item on the agenda was the appointment of Kenneth Williams as Director of the Council Office of Financial Analysis, COFA, for a four-year term effective immediately. I move passage of these items by the first favorable roll call vote of the committee on finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider. That concludes my report, Madam President.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Thank you, Chairman Dowell. The committee on aviation, Chairman O'Shea.
Thank you, Madam President. Reporting for the committee on aviation, for which a virtual meeting was held on Friday, May 15, 2020. The committee had one item under consideration: Ordinance 02020-2365, a provision of COVID-19-related relief for Chicago O'Hare International Airport and Midway International Airport concessionaires. This item passed unanimously by the committee members present. If there are no objections, Madam President, I move for passage of this item by the same roll call as item number one of the committee on finance in the same motion to reconsider if there are no objections. That concludes my report.
I believe that Alderman Irvin would like to be heard on this matter. Alderman?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. As relates to the relief at the airport, I do not want to be confused that we do not believe that relief is necessary for airport concessionaires. I firmly believe that to be the case. However, the time that is being allotted for these agreements and the fact that these agreements did not come back to committee or council for approval is is a challenge for me. And I would request to be recorded as voting no in that light. Thank you.
Thank you. With the exception of Alderman Irvin, who wishes to be recorded as voting no on this matter, there are no other objections. The motion, Chairman O'Shea, is approved. Thank you, Chairman. Next, committee on economic capital and technology development, Chairman Vegas.
Madam President, members of the city council reporting for the committee on economic capital and technology development, which held a meeting on May 12, 2020. Committee recommends passage of the following: Items one through 12 are a series of appointments and reappointments to various special service areas. Carl DeSullivan to SSA Number 34, Uptown Commission; Jack B. Robalski; Mike DeMaio; Manuel Romero to SSA Number 28, Six Corners Commission; Abdullah Hatzah to SSA Number Three, Southwest Business Growth Area Commission; Jason R. Cross to SSA Number 21, Nikens Square Commission; Jason R. Cross to SSA number twenty-one, Beacon Square Commission. Julia Perkins and Adrian Urmer to SSA number forty-two, Seventy-first Street Stony Commission. Nicholas Anderson to SSA number fifty-four, Sheridan Road Commission. Daniel B. Cornu and Simon Kozick to SSA number sixty, Albany Park Commission. Rick Perez to SSA number twenty, twenty-five, Little Village Commission. Concerning item number five, the appointment of Azula Haza to SSA number three, let the record reflect that Alderman Burke abstained from voting on this item within the preceding twelve months on the Burke practice law at a firm whose attorneys represented the Greater Southwest Development Corporation in property tax appeals before Cook County Assessor, Cook County Board of Review and Illinois Tax Appeal Board relating to various properties. I move passage of these items by the first favorable roll call vote of Committee on Finance, with the exception of Alderman Burke, who has abstained in the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Thank you, Chairman.
Item thirteen is an ordinance in support of a Class Seven B's tax incentive for properties located at thirty-six eleven through thirty-six fifty-seven North Central Avenue. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance in associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item fourteen is a substitute resolution for a call for U.S. Congress to enact and fund national water affordability program modeled after the Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance in the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item fifteen is a resolution, is a call for hearings to explore possible options for establishing free broadband internet for all households in the city of Chicago. At the request of Alderman Galdinas, this item has been tabled in the committee. Item sixteen is an ordinance in support of a Class L tax incentive for properties at a property located at two-twenty-six West Jackson Boulevard. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, I'd like to make a statement regarding the, the, the activities that took place regarding the Class L tax incentive, and I want to thank my colleagues for bringing this item forward and discussing, advocating for minority women business enterprise opportunities. Let this be a message to developers and contractors throughout the city of Chicago that when coming forward with projects that require City Council approval, please keep in mind that thirty-two members of the City Council are either black or brown, and that we are demanding that any project, that there be a reflection of the city of Chicago, and we're not going to, we're not going to continue to be left on the sidelines, regardless of where this project takes place, regardless of how this, the funding for the project comes about. The fact that any developer or any contractor that seeks City Council approval needs to take into account and consideration that there be some diversity and some parity when awarding some of these contracts.
Chairman Vegas, if I may, I appreciate you making that statement. I know the vast majority of your colleagues supported wholeheartedly, and I join you in indicating this must be a message that developers understand. It's not that the city of Chicago isn't open for business, it's that business has to include people from our neighborhoods, people who are members of the small business community, and of course, women and minority-owned businesses absolutely have to get a share in the economic success of our city. So thank you, Chairman, for making that statement. I believe that Alderman Irvin wishes to be heard on this matter. Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, I wanted to concur on the statement that both yourself and Chairman Vegas stated as relates to goals of our, of our city. Again, we must be included in order for all of us to move forward. It was once said, "A rising tide shall lift all boats," and we want to definitely be part of that conversation and, and partake in, in what's happening in our communities across the city, not just in the neighborhoods that we represent, but we are one city working together, and thank you for your support, and thank you, Chairman, for your support in the matter.
Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Vegas. The Committee on Housing and Real Estate, Chairman Osterman.
I'm here. Thank you, Madam President, members of City Council, reporting for your Committee on Housing and Real Estate, which held a meeting, Committee meeting on Tuesday, May twelfth. The Committee is a series of reports recommending passage of the following. Item number one is the establishment of the emergency relief for affordable multi-family properties within the Department of Housing to provide short-term financial assistance. I move passage of this ordinance by the first favorable roll call of the Committee on Finance in associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider, with the exception of Alderman Raymond Lopez, who wishes to be recorded as a no, if there's a no, if there's no objection.
I believe that Alderman Lopez wishes to speak on this matter. Alderman Lopez?
Thank, thank you, Madam President. Yes, I do wish to be recorded as being a no on this item. I am not against efforts to help people stay in their homes. What I am against is what seems to be a three million dollar bailout to developers when money could be spent better getting it directly into the hands of the tenants who need it most. Two of the prime examples of the beneficiaries of this program in the last six months have received fifteen million and, as of today, twenty-four million dollars in TIF subsidies for their efforts to provide affordable housing. On top of that, we are now providing them with rent guarantees if their tenants are unable to pay, under the guise that we are in this together, and I think that our efforts should be at helping the actual tenant with rents relief, direct rental relief and cash in their hands so that they can decide how to maintain their family's integrity during these difficult times. We are already on the hook as a city with our partners, and I don't think that giving them even more money after we've given them millions is the right way to go, and I look forward to the opportunity to work with you and my chairman to find out how we can do that moving forward, because if we have fifty, forty-five million dollars to spend in TIF money in total, as we have both in the TRP projects of January, the Bigger Deck project today, and the other millions of dollars we spent in TIF on other projects, I'm certain we can find a way to put those TIF dollars into the hands of renters who need it most. Thank you, Madam President.
Chairman Osterman, I believe you have a pending motion.
So I, I'll renew the motion, the passage of this ordinance by the first favorable roll call of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider, with the exception of Alderman Lopez, if there's no objection.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Item number two is an ordinance for the provision of a multi-family program funds loans to the South Sule Center Preservation Association Limited Partnership for Acquisition and Rehabilitation of building at thirty thirty-nine East Ninety-first Street for renovation of one hundred and ten senior units in the tenth ward. I move passage of this ordinance with the first favorable roll call of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Item number three is the ordinance accepting the bid for David A. Beck for purchase of a vacant property at one-three-three-one-one South Burley on behalf of the Chicago Board of Education. This property is in the tenth ward. I move for passage of this item by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Osterman. Committee on License and Consumer Protection, Chairman Mits.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm reporting for the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. We had a virtual, we held a virtual meeting on May seventh, two thousand and twenty to consider the following ordinance, zero-two-zero-two-zero dash twenty-one seventy-nine, amending fees for violations of outdoor patio regulation in the second ward. Item number zero-two-zero-two-zero dash twenty-two thirty-six was an ordinance calling for a ninety-day signature collection period for new or additional shared housing units for duration of Merrill Executive Order two thousand and twenty dash ten by Alderman Quinn. Ordinance number zero-two-zero-two-zero dash twenty-two one zero to prohibit the advertising, listing rental or booking of occasional rentals within restricted residential zones in the thirteenth ward. And final item number zero-two-zero, zero-two-zero dash twenty-one thirty-nine regarding hours of operation for outdoor patio in the Central Business District in the forty-second ward. Item number six prohibiting impelling and portions of the forty-second ward. Zero-two, zero-two-zero dash twenty-two seventy-three, providing for agreements implementing centralized dispatching systems, wheelchair accessible tax cabs, Mayor Leifert and the Commission of Business Affairs and Consumer Protection. A direct introduction of opposed ordinance conferring COVID-nineteen departmental authorization, Mayor Leifert and Commissioner of Business and Consumers Affairs. These recommendations were concurred in by a board's vote. Sorry, we had four ordinance regarding moratorium in various wards, which was the twenty-seventh and the thirty-eighth ward. These recommendations were concurred in by a board's vote of the members of the License Committee on May seventh, two thousand and twenty. Madam President, I move that the City Council concur in the recommendation of the License Committee by the same roll call as item number one of the Committee on Finance and the same unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
That concludes my report for the City Council, Madam President.
Thank you, Chairman Mits. Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, Chairman Burnett.
Thank you, Madam President. Reporting for your Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, for which a virtual meeting was held on Thursday, May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. Before the committee, there were ninety-six items. There were eighty-three routine traffic items that passed and thirteen routine traffic items that did not pass. If there's no objections, I move for the passage of these ordinances in the honor of this. Thank, that concludes my report. Thank you, Madam President.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Thank you, Chairman Burnett. Committee on Transportation and Public Way, Chairman Brookins.
Thank you, Madam President. Reporting for your Committee on Transportation and Public Way, the meeting of which was held on May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, the following ordinances were passed by a majority of the members present. Items on pages two through twenty-six include three hundred and nine ordinances for grants of privileges introduced by the local aldermen from wards one through three, eight, ten, eleven, fourteen, fifteen, seventeen, nineteen, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, thirty, thirty-two, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty-one through forty-six, and forty-eight through fifty. Under Rule fourteen of the Rules of Order and Procedures of City of Chicago Council, Alderman Burke abstains from voting on the following items, Grants of Privileges zero-two zero-two-zero dash two-three-zero-one and zero-two-zero-two-zero dash two-two-nine-seven located in the second ward. On, items on page twenty-seven include seventeen ordinances for canopies introduced by local aldermen from wards one, two, eight, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, thirty-six, forty-two, and forty-three. Under Rule fourteen of the Rules of Order and Procedures of Chicago City Council, Alderman Burke abstains from voting on the following item, Canopy zero-two-zero-two-zero dash two-three-zero-two located in the second ward. Items on pages twenty-nine through thirty-one include one amendment and twenty-four ordinances for miscellaneous items introduced by local aldermen from wards one, three, eleven, seventeen, nineteen, twenty-seven through twenty-nine, thirty-two, thirty-nine, forty-three, forty-four, forty-six, and forty-seven. Page thirty-two includes a re-subdivision ordinance located in the eleventh ward. Page thirty-three includes one release ordinance and one easement ordinance located in the twenty-seventh and forty-second ward. Under Rule fourteen of the Rules of Procedure of the City of Chicago Council, Alderman Burnett abstains from voting on the following item, Release of Covenant zero-two-zero-two-zero dash eight-one-nine located in the twenty-seventh ward. And under Rule fourteen of the Rules of Order and Procedure of Chicago City Council, Alderman Burke abstains from voting on the following item, Easement zero-two-zero-two-zero dash one-nine-one-six located in the forty-second ward. I will note that Alderman Burnett has abstained in that a relative has worked for the company seeking redress, and with respect to Alderman Burke, the Rule fourteen was noted as he or member of his law firm has represented a party seeking redress within the past twelve months, except for those matters in which the aldermen have abstained under Rule fourteen. And if there are no objections, I move passage of these items by the last most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider. You're muted.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Your Honor, with that, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Committee on Workforce Development, Chairman Sadlowski Garza.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the City Council. Reporting for your Committee on Workforce Development, which held a virtual meeting on May eleventh, two thousand and twenty, there were three items on the agenda. First, zero-two-zero-two-zero dash twenty-three forty-three, Amendment of a Municipal Code one dash twenty-four dash zero-one-ten, prohibiting employer retaliation for covered employees complying with public health orders. Substitute Ordinance twenty-two-zero-two-zero twenty-three forty-three was introduced and accepted by the Committee. SO twenty-two-zero-two-zero twenty-three forty-three was passed by majority voice vote with Alderman Raymond Lopez voting nay. Hearing no objection, I move for the first most favorable vote on the Committee on Finance Report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are two of your colleagues who wish to speak on one of these matters. Let's go to Alderman Moore.
My apologies, I was, I thought she was going to do all three together. I want to focus on number three, so I take my hand down so he gets another three.
Okay. Alderman Tony?
Good morning, Miss, Madam Mayor. I would like to talk about the Fair Work Week Ordinance. Is this the right time?
No. Next one.
My turn, thanks.
Okay. You have pending motion, hearing no objection, so ordered. Please proceed, Chairman Garza.
Thank you, Madam President. Second, a direct introduction, zero-two-zero-two-zero dash twenty-three seventy, a proposed ordinance to amend the Chicago Fair Work Week Ordinance. Item was passed unanimously by voice, by voice vote. Hearing no objection, I move for the first most favorable vote on the Committee on, on the Finance Report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider. I believe this is the one that Chairman Tony would like to speak to.
Chairman Tony?
Thank you, Mayor and my colleagues. I spoke out on this direct introduction at committee, and I'll reiterate my concerns. Though we are at unprecedented time of business interruption, loss of employment, nearly a quarter of the workforce is currently unemployed, and I would bet that would be a higher number among our hourly workers, which do reflect a large percentage of African and Hispanic workers. We know that the hospitality and entertainment sectors have been decimated and really will be one of the last industries to return to work. My, my colleagues also should remember that as of July first, we will be increasing the wages basically from thirteen the wages, uh, basically from thirteen to fourteen. I know there's an exception for some of our smaller employers. And we're raising, uh, I think almost thirty percent the wage of tip credit. You know, I, compounding the wage and the regulations for fair scheduling, while I know you and I and our members have worked on this ordinance, um, and the compromise delaying the, uh, private right of action until January one, um, it was my effort and it continues to be my effort to, um, to, to, uh, move a complete, uh, delay until January one on both the wages and the fair scheduling ordinance. I know that's not gonna happen, uh, but I wanted to, uh, put my voice of concern and to let my colleagues know that they remain accountable, uh, to the businesses, uh, in their ward and the workers. I mean, it's not just about the owners. We heard on the call this morning, uh, that employers are just as vulnerable i- in this pandemic as the workers. There are approximately fifty percent of the businesses, yeah, in the nation and for that matter in Chicago that are literally not open. And to introduce these regulations and, and wage, uh, increases at this time is the wrong time. And then I wanted to just, um, just, as most of my colleagues know, they understand where, uh, you know, where my, uh, heart is in regards to the fact that ninety-five percent of employers are trying to do the right thing. Most of them were not eligible for PPP, um, and, um, who knows what's gonna happen before the year end. I've also heard, uh, reports that the unemployment rate possibly is going up to fifteen, fifteen percent, uh, and that the forecast, uh, of, of, very long contraction of GDP and potentially even in twenty-twenty-one, the, uh, the unemployment rate will still be close to ten percent. And I just worry that this is, um, really gonna set Chicago employers and workers back, the people that we really wanna help the most. Um, and I just wanted to voice my concern for that and to be recorded as a no on item, on that particular item of unfair scheduling. So, that's my, um, that's my, uh, two cents worth. Thank you.
Thank you Chairman Tunny. Um, third item, R twenty-twenty dash two-eight-four calls for House Speaker Michael Madigan, Senate President Don Harmon, and members of the Illinois General Assembly to place S J R C A twenty-three Workers Rights Amendment on the November third, twenty-twenty Illinois general election ballot.
Chairman Garza?
Yes ma'am.
I apologize for interrupting. There are two issues. Alderman Moore, did you wish to speak on the preceding, um, item on fair scheduling?
Yes, number three, yes.
Madam Chairman? Madam President? Alderman Michelle Smith, I want to be recorded as a no on the Fair Work Week changes.
Thank you Alderman Smith.
Thank you.
Alderman Garza?
Alderman Hopkins recorded as a no on ordinance two-three-seven-zero also, thank you.
Alderman Riley as well, Mayor.
Okay, so Alderman, Chairman Garza, I think we need to, uh, move to, uh, move to approve , uh, item three first, item two first, and then we can move on to item three.
Mayor, before you do item two, I'm sorry Mayor, and I'm sorry for the confusion. If you can call on me, please.
Uh, go ahead Alderman Moore.
Um, I was going to say, cause unfortunately with everything that's going on and, and sometimes it seems like we're missing something. Sometimes we get these briefings, I'm not even fully understanding what the, um, amendment is on the Fair Work Week Ordinance, and I don't wanna debate it here since it was probably debated in committee. And sometimes doing the right thing is may not, uh, we may not be doing the right thing. And I wanna hear more about this, I don't wanna be recorded as a yes or no without being fully understanding. So I'm asking if we can defer and publish this item.
Alderman Moore, um, there's plenty of opportunity to understand this matter, um, and deferring and publishing, I think, is highly problematic. I would ask you to reconsider that and maybe Alderman Garza, uh, can give us a short summary of what this matter is on.
I'll take that.
Agree to that?
I'll take that reconsideration with a short summary, yes, please.
Okay, thank you Alderman Moore. Um, if we're speaking to the Fair Work Week Ordinance, July first is the implementation date for the Fair Work Week Ordinance. Um, we actually passed a substitute ordinance to, um, to delay the private right of action, which means that people, um, during scheduling, they would not be able, they will not be able to sue their employer for, um, unfair scheduling practices because COVID has actually put us in a position where we cannot predict scheduling. So it wouldn't be fair for an employee, I mean, I'm sorry, an employer to be held accountable. So that private right of action won't take effect until January first.
Mayor, thank you for that clarification, I move that in on support, yes.
I believe that, uh, Alderman Lopez is, uh, asking to be heard.
Thank you Madam, thank you Madam President. I just wanted to clarify that this doesn't prevent the city from still taking action. It only stops private lawsuits from being moving forward.
That's correct.
That is correct.
Thank you Madam President.
Chairman Garza, would you renew your motion?
Yes, secondly, so I, the item was passed at a committee unanimously by, by, by voice vote. So, um, hearing no objection, I move for the first most favorable vote on the Committee on Finance and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider with Alderman Riley, Smith, Hopkins, and Tunny voting no.
Alderman Beal, are you wishing to be recorded as a no vote?
Yes, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. So with that, with that, those caveats and the no votes, hearing no further objection, the motion is granted.
Okay, thank you. Third item, R twenty-twenty dash two-eight-four calls for House Speaker Michael Madigan, Senate President Don Harmon, and members of the Illinois General Assembly to place S J R C A twenty-three, the Workers Rights Amendment on the November third, twenty-twenty Illinois general election ballot. The item was passed unanimously by voice, by voice vote. Hearing no objection, I move for the first most favorable vote on the Committee on Finance Report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider. Alderman Moore, did you wanna speak to this?
Yes. Um, I'm gonna wait for the mayor to call on me.
Yeah, Alderman Moore, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I, I, speaking to some of my, uh, representatives in my state centers, that there was, um, some concern and some confusion, um, about this point. As, as, as we all support workers' rights, the whole issue, my understanding, um, was around, um, as a work to rights state that we cannot have, um, other companies that would come in, as you said, in my community and just build and, and, and not have non-union workers. We have some companies, um, a couple of companies, small African-American companies who are not all union, um, workers. And if they coming to build in our communities and make it better, um, and whether they're paying thirty dollars an hour, a lot of people are not making thirty and thirty-five dollars an hour, until we get the fair representation that we just so far apart to get, um, from the, um, um, ordinance that was just recently passed on economic committee, um, that's, it's challenging for me to support this. And based on what I'm hearing, um, some of my representatives, my colleagues, I mean, my, uh, reps, my senators say, um, that everybody downstate is not on this. I can't force them and say something if they're not fully in support of it. So, um, I'll, I'll defer and publish this, I won't Mayor, so I just vote no.
So, just to be clear Alderman, I wanna make sure that, uh, we're all clear. This is a resolution, it's not an ordinance. And the action that would have to be taken, uh, by the Illinois General Assembly, uh, there's no action that can be taken, um, by this body other than saying yea or nay as to the resolution, but in terms of, um, mandating this since the law, that's something that powers reserved to, uh, the state. Alderman Quinn.
Thank you Madam Mayor. Um, I'm standing today in solidarity with labor at a time when they need us most. I'm in strong support of the collective bargaining rights of our union brothers and sisters, the very people who are on the front lines today, sacrificing their own health and safety to protect others. Other states, including many here in the Midwest, continue to attack union workers in so-called right-to-work laws. Many of those proposals have failed and none of them have the best interest of union workers in mind. It's time, after many years of playing defense against these job-killing laws, that we go on the offense here in Illinois. I ask that we adopt this resolution to take that next important step to enshrine the rights of our union brothers and sisters and officially enshrine their collective bargaining rights in our state's constitution. Thank you. I ask for a roll call vote on this.
Well said.
Uh, Mr. Clark, please call the roll. Mr. Clark, please proceed.
Alderman Lasparra.
Aye.
Alderman Hopkins.
Aye.
Alderman Dowell.
Aye.
Alderman King.
Aye.
Alderman Hairston.
Aye.
Alderman Sawyer.
Aye.
Alderman Mitchell.
Aye.
Alderman Harris.
Aye.
Alderman Beal.
Aye, aye.
Alderman Zadlowski-Garza.
Absolutely, aye.
Alderman Thompson.
Aye.
Alderman Cardenas.
Aye.
Alderman Quinn.
Aye.
Alderman Burke.
Aye.
Alderman Lopez.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
No.
Alderman Curtis.
Aye.
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 Alderman Brookins.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Aye.
Alderman Tabarez.
Aye.
Alderman Scott.
Aye.
Alderman Sichu Lopez.
Aye.
Alderman Maldonado.
Aye.
Alderman Burnett.
Aye.
Alderman Irvin.
Aye.
Alderman Telfiero.
Aye.
Alderman Revoyes.
Aye.
Alderman Cardona.
Aye.
Alderman Wagisback. Alderman Wagisback.
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Aye.
Alderman Austin. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Alderman Viejas.
Aye.
Ramirez Rosa vote aye.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa vote aye. Alderman Viejas.
Aye.
Alderman Mitz. Alderman Mitz.
Aye.
Alderman Spazaro.
Yes.
Alderman Nugent.
Yes.
Alderman Vescas.
But we need the mayor.
Alderman Vescas.
Aye.
Alderman Politano.
Aye.
Alderman Riley.
At Dow, please mute, uh, absolutely.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Tunny.
Aye.
Alderman Gardner.
Aye.
Alderman Kappelman.
Aye.
Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Osterman.
Aye.
Alderman Haddon.
Aye.
Alderman Silverstein.
Aye.
Alderman Austin. Your Honor, there are forty-eight ayes one day.
Madam President, it's Alderman Thompson.
Yes, Alderman Thompson.
Aye. Motion to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
The motion for reconsideration, uh, fails. Um, I wanna commend the members of the City Council, uh, for your overwhelming support of this important resolution. I join you in opposing, um, any efforts, uh, to prevent, um, men and women who are on the front lines and working hard, uh, to be denied, uh, their right to organize. And as long as I'm mayor, I can assure you, uh, I will oppose, uh, any efforts to bring what right to work, um, to this city. Uh, thank you. I also just wanna remind Alderman, uh, that when you are not voting or speaking, please continue to have your, uh, your phones on mute. Uh, we are starting to hear a little background noise and conversation. All right, uh, Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards, Alderman Tunny.
Thank you Mayor and Madam President and members of the City Council, presenting a series of reports for your Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, Building Standards, for which a hell, which held a meeting on March sixteenth of twenty-twenty, the following item was passed by a majority of the members present. Page one contains the document number zero-two-zero-two-zero dash seven-four-three, the historical landmark designation for the Chicago and Northwestern Railway Office Building located at two-twenty-six West Jackson. I hereby move passage of this item by the last most favorable roll call vote of the Finance Committee Report and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President and members of the City Council, presenting a series of reports for your Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, which held a meeting on May nineteenth, twenty-twenty, these reports are grouped for convenience. The following items were passed by a majority of the members present. Pages one through six contain various map amendments in the first, fourth, eleventh, fifteenth, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, thirtieth, thirty-sixth, thirty-eighth, fortieth wards. I move passage of these items by the last most favorable roll call vote of the Finance Committee Report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page six contains document number zero-two-zero-two-zero dash nine-four for the address commonly known as four-twenty-one through four-fifty-one North Michigan Avenue, one-thirty-seven through two-oh-nine East Illinois, and four-fifty-eight through four-seventy-eight North Cityfront Plaza Drive, also known as the Tribune Tower, uh, development. I move passage by this item by the same motion. Um, I also understand, uh, the, uh, sponsoring Alderman, or not the sponsoring Alderman, but the Alderman where the Tribune Tower is, Alderman Brendan Riley, I think, wants to be heard on this item.
Alderman Riley.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I would like to speak to my colleagues because this is a incredibly impactful project for the City of Chicago. Um, I think it required a bit of context and explanation to understand how we've gotten to this point, um, after two years plus of negotiating across the table from the developer. Uh, the proposed Tribune Tower plan development is an ambitious one, repurposing an iconic Chicago landmark, uh, the historic Tribune Tower, while adding the second tallest skyscraper in the City of Chicago to our world-renowned skyline. The applicant is currently renovating the existing Chicago landmark under simple Berwick building permits, which will deliver a hundred and sixty-two for-sale condominium units in the historic structure. The applicant is proposing to construct a fourteen-hundred-and-forty-two-foot-tall mixed-use building, including retail and commercial uses, along with two-hundred hotel keys and five-hundred-and-sixty-four dwelling units. The overall planned development will have seven-hundred-and-twenty-six dwelling units between the two buildings, as well as six-hundred-and-eighty-seven parking stalls and fourteen loading berths. To be clear, this is a very ambitious plan and one that has the potential to transform this important stretch of Michigan Avenue. Ambition play, ambitious plans like this can also impact local infrastructure, traffic flow, loading patterns, and open space. As Alderman, it's my responsibility to identify areas of concern and work with city planners and transportation officials to negotiate improvements and public benefits to mitigate issues, offset density, and enhance the surrounding neighborhood. Thanks to our robust and thorough public process, we have no shortage of opinions and feedback from the neighbors. Following meetings with SOAR, the Neighborhood Association of Record, and other local stakeholders, we condensed all of those concerns down into a simple punch list. we condensed all of those concerns down into a simple punch list of infrastructure and design changes that the developer would be required to make. I co-hosted two community meetings where the developers shared their plans with the surrounding neighborhood. The first meeting was held April two thousand and eighteen, and after extended negotiations, the second meeting occurred in November of two thousand and nineteen. These public meetings were so well-attended that the ballroom at the Sheraton was filled to capacity at each. Nearly a thousand of my constituents attended each of these public meetings. So to say that this was publicly vetted would be an understatement. Thanks to all that valuable feedback, many important changes were made to the tower's design. Developer better integrated the parking base into the skin of the building, and the landscape and open space plans were completely redesigned, adding far more active green space and mature trees to Pioneer Court than exists today and far more than was originally proposed by this developer. In addition to addressing architectural and open space concerns, we conducted a granular review of traffic and loading studies with C-DOT. That resulted in the developer being required to make major revisions to their traffic and loading plans. We negotiated many important design and infrastructure changes to improve traffic flow, loading, and public safety on both the upper and lower levels of Michigan Avenue, Illinois Street, and Cityfront Plaza. All of those will be entirely funded by the developer. I'll give you just a couple of examples of what is a two-page list of obligations. But one is that on Lower Michigan and Lower Illinois Street, which is subterranean, you'll see the addition of new vehicular and pedestrian entries, two-twenty-four-seven manned security offices with lines of sight through the perimeter of the building, pickup and drop-off areas to accommodate all rideshare and passenger vehicles and commercial loading, enhanced lighting and refreshed infrastructure with clean and unfinished wall surfaces to improve the pedestrian experience on the lower levels. And this revised plan will keep all of the most intense loading and traffic below grade, which will dramatically improve the aesthetic and safety of this lower level. On upper level Illinois, we have required the developer to construct an internal building cut-through from Illinois to Cityfront Plaza for hotel guests' drop-off, taking all of that traffic and loading off of the curbs and into the internal base of the building. We'll also have restricted curbside parking regulations and the disruption, sorry, the removal of a disruptive and dangerous traffic circle on Cityfront Plaza. The list goes on and on. But I do want to emphasize that, in addition to all these local infrastructure improvements and public benefits, it also is going to provide a great benefit to the broader city of Chicago as a whole. It will be making a thirteen-million-dollar contribution to the Affordable Housing Fund. It will be making a fifteen-million-dollar contribution to the Neighborhood Opportunity Fund. And it should not be lost on anyone. Moving forward, once delivered, this project will pay twenty-five million dollars a year in property taxes, one of the larger tax bills you see in the city of Chicago. At a time when Chicago needs some good news for its local economy, I'm happy to report that this project will boost economic development by creating thousands of construction job hours for the men and women of the building trades and more than four-hundred permanent full-time jobs on-site once the project is completed. Despite all of this good news, there were legitimate concerns raised about the lack of minority participation requirements for this planned development, as well as concerns about the lack of diversity in minority participation on the current, as-of-right landmark renovation project that's already underway. In response to those very legitimate concerns, we are requiring the developer to commit to a twenty-six-six MBE-WB participation in the overall project, meaning that between the two towers and the PD, the overall job distribution must be at twenty-six and six. That obligation has been memorialized in the planned development statements and upon approval will become law binding. Further, we require the developer to affirm its commitment to meet the goals of twenty-six-six in writing and also promise that they will not seek any waivers or in lieu of penalties to excuse those MBE-WBE obligations. The developer is committed to ensure contractors on this project will reflect the racial diversity of the city of Chicago. And to that end, the developer has agreed to retain a diversity consultant to work on this project. Furthermore, the developer has agreed to meet with the Black and Latino caucuses at their request to talk about diversity on the site in minority hiring practices moving forward. We will also be requesting regular updates on their progress in minority hiring for this project. I would like to read that commitment, the written commitment, into the record now. Tribune Tower East, Chicago Owner LLC, as a joint venture between affiliates of the S.T.I.M. Group and the Gollan Company LLC, agree that with respect to the Tribune Tower project, which is the subject of a planned development application pending before the Chicago City Council on May twenty, two thousand and twenty, that with respect to this project, it is their commitment to achieving the goal to utilize twenty-six percent of qualified and certified minority business enterprises and six percent of women-owned business enterprises on this project. Further, the applicant will not seek waivers from goals if they are qualified certified MBE contractors and qualified and certified WBE contractors. The applicant also states that the contractors on this project will reflect the diversity of the city of Chicago. The applicant also commits to hiring a diversity consultant to work on this project. This was a long and difficult negotiation. In fact, it's lasted closer to two and a half years. But I think it's one that has resulted in a far superior project, not just for the surrounding neighborhood, but for the city as a whole. I think the developer agrees. I'd like to thank SOAR, neighborhood residents, local stakeholders, for all of their local feedback and suggestions throughout this process. I'd like to thank the Department of Planning and Development, the Department of Transportation. Their senior staff were instrumental in helping us to secure these important improvements and commitments. And I'm very appreciative of their counsel and support. I would also like to thank my colleagues on the zoning committee and in the Black and Latino caucuses for, rightfully so, advocating for a more diverse work site on such an impactful project for the city of Chicago. And so for all the reasons I've just mentioned, I would respectfully request a favorable vote from my colleagues for this project. But I think this shows that on grand-scale projects, this one, almost seven-hundred-million dollars in budget, we can move the needle on minority hiring and the diversity of these work sites, and those do not need to be victories only relegated to the neighborhoods. We should see more of these victories in downtown Chicago and on the north side of Chicago. And I'm committed to working with my colleagues in the Black and Latino caucus to make sure that happens. So thank you all. I would encourage a nai vote.
The chair recognizes Alderman Scott.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I first like to thank Alderman Riley for, one, bringing this project to fruition, but, two, working with the caucuses to make sure that there is diversity on the site. I'd also be remiss to not thank Chairman Jason Urban and Alderman Greg Mitchell for their leadership, not just in this project, but in terms of the project that went through Chairman Villegas' committee, making sure that there is diversity on the site. And again, I'd like to thank you, Mayor, for your commitment to making sure that there is diversity throughout this city of Chicago, and I would be voting aye on this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President. Also, I want to echo the statements of Alderman Scott and also thank Alderman Riley for his help and diligence in this process and also you, Madam President, for your leadership in this as well. We want to continue for our city to grow, however, we want our city, all of us, to grow with our city. So again, we appreciate the work that's being done and the commitments that have been made. And we just believe that this should just be how things are done, where we recognize the diversity of our great city and continue to move forward in such a way that everyone benefits from the largesse in all of our city. So again, as I said previously, the rising tide happening in downtown should lift us all from all of our communities across our city. So again, thank you. We also will be, I also will be supporting this measure. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Hawkins.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this project, and I want to congratulate Alderman Riley for his stewardship of what was a very lengthy and detailed process. Alderman Riley mentioned the neighborhood organization SOAR. I once had the privilege of leading that organization in the years before I became Alderman, and I can tell you, they can be a tough group. They're independent, they're experienced, they're thoughtful, and they're demanding. All of us deal with residents' associations, and that tends to be true across the city. And not only did the residents of Alderman Riley's ward endorse this project, they endorsed the process. They would not have supported this project despite the many benefits if they felt that there were flaws or defects in the over-two-year process that led us to this point. So that is a tribute to Alderman Riley and his staff, that they're able to take a building of this height and density and overcome the normal NIBI types of objections that we always hear. You can imagine what those were like with a project of this scale. So that's a tribute to you, Alderman Riley, and all your hard work on this. This is a benefit to Michigan Avenue. This is a benefit to the city of Chicago. And as Alderman Riley mentioned, it bears repeating, thirteen million dollars will be generated for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, fifteen million dollars for the Neighborhood Opportunity Fund, and eventually, when the project comes online, twenty-five million dollars in property tax revenue for a city that certainly needs the revenue. So congratulations, Alderman Riley, on a job well done.
The chair recognizes Alderman Dow.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I wanted to also congratulate my colleague Alderman Riley for bringing what looks like another architecturally significant building to our city. I also want to thank him for his flexibility and willingness to address the, to make the project even better by addressing the minority participation on both the construction side and the job side. I want to thank the mayor for her support on this project. You know, we live in a diverse city, as you always say, Madam President, and every development that comes before our body for approval of some sort needs to reflect the diversity of our city. And I thank you for your leadership on this, and also Alderman Riley. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Dow. The chair recognizes Alderman Sichu Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I sit also in the zoning committee, and the project obviously has our approval. My concern obviously is on the follow-up of many projects and how local hiring has historically systematically excluded people of color. Today, I am very concerned, of course, on the situation of our Latino community within, in significant numbers are getting sick and obviously are not receiving any relief. So I want to urge Alderman Riley and all of our colleagues to be extremely mindful during these times about the importance of providing fair, equitable development to our community. Our communities in the south and the west side are starving, are suffering, and I do hope that this is not another pledge that is not followed, but a commitment to make sure our communities actually receive the jobs that we badly need during these times. So I will obviously hope that Alderman Riley falls up and with our chairman, Maldonado, we can have a conversation, not only about this development, but a lot of the mega developments that are happening so that we can truly help our communities during these difficult times. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Spazado.
Thank you, Madam President. Just one question. I know this is not a committee meeting. Is there any city requirements that city residents have jobs? Because as we know, most of these construction sites are loaded with suburban stickers or plates, I'm sorry, stickers or out-of-state plates. So just a quick question. Like I said, I know this is not a committee meeting, but what's our standard for city residents? I'm hearing everybody worry about city residents. Is there any city resident requirement?
Perhaps either Chairman Tony or Alderman Riley can address this issue. Obviously, we do have residency requirements in certain projects. It's unknown to me whether or not those apply with respect to this particular project that is, as I understand it, a hundred percent privately funded.
So, Madam President, I believe Alderman Riley has said that there are no public funds in this project. I believe with that, with that element, that there is no residency requirement on this project, but I will yield to Alderman Riley on this. I think I'm right on it.
Alderman Riley.
Thank you, Madam President. Alderman Tony is correct. This project is not receiving any public subsidy. It's a hundred percent privately funded. In fact, they're providing a twenty-nine-million-dollar payment to the city of Chicago. That said, we made a lot of progress on building an important minority hiring and diversity requirements. I have no doubt that we can secure a good commitment out of this developer that the bulk of the jobs will be for Chicago residents. And I know that in subsequent meetings, the Black and Latino caucuses will impress that upon the developer as well. Because the goal here is not to necessarily increase employment opportunities for peoples of color generally. It's really intended to benefit Chicago residents. And so we can follow up on that for sure. Believe me, this is not the end of the conversation with the developer. But these are also developers that do a lot of work in Chicago and will continue to do that for decades. And so to my colleague Alderman Sichu Lopez, point taken. But these folks are not a fly-by-night operation, and we have a long memory here. So we know that their commitment that they've given to us today and memorialized, they will be held to fulfilling that commitment. And I assure you, Mayor Lightfoot, will have that with a post-it note on her computer screen as well. This is not something that will be forgotten. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman.
The chair recognizes Alderman Maldonado.
Thank you, Madam President. I am equally concerned. I'm equally concerned as Alderman Sichu Lopez expressed about the commitment of these developers, that they say one thing, and then once they implement and start working on those projects, they forget about the initial commitments that they made to us, people of color and of the city council, and to our community in general. Contrary to what Alderman Riley expressed, I have not received any call. I have not had any conversation with any one of those developers as the chair of the Latino caucus for the city of Chicago. So if this is one example, the way, in the way that they are going to be planning to be communicating and executing their commitment to us, I already have my first red flag. So with that, you know, I will be voting no on this item.
Madam President, Alderman Perry.
Yes, Alderman Riley, please proceed.
If I could just respond to the concern Alderman Maldonado just raised. I'm not suggesting that they've been in conference with Latino caucus. To be clear, the majority of this conversation has been driven by Black Caucus leadership. However, Alderman Villegas has been intrinsically involved in these conversations with myself, the administration, and the Black Caucus. And I think it's accepted that if this is good for the Black Caucus, it should be good for the Latino caucus, and there needs to be a dialogue. And so the idea of having these regular meetings after passage, of course, it's up to you as the chairman of the Latino caucus, Alderman. But I want you to know that they will make themselves available to you and your caucus members to walk through your concerns and address them in real time. There is no way, look, my reputation is also tied to this project. I think my track record here with my colleagues is that I keep my commitments. I think my track record with developers downtown is that we make them keep theirs as well. And so, you know, besides being able to vouch for this and tell you it has been thoroughly vetted, not just by me, but by the mayor and her staff and our colleagues, this will happen. And I give you my word on that. So I hear where you're coming from, Chairman. So I hear where you're coming from, Chairman Maldonado, but I hope you can place some trust in me on this one.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Lispar.
Thank you, Chair. Alderman Riley, definitely a beautiful building, I think it's an admirable addition to our skyline. I have nothing but applause for the public process, I can only imagine the stress that went into that. I'm curious, you were talking about the contribution that they made to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And while we know we need to keep the trust fund moving forward, do you have a sense of why they chose not to do units on-site? I know that that's been a challenge for us of late, particularly as we try to think critically about the cost of segregation, how do we affirmatively further fair housing in areas where affordability is tough to add? Do you have a sense of why they went in the direction they did?
If I may, Alderman, when you have questions of this sort, you should be asking them through the chair. So Alderman Tony, I believe that Alderman Lispar intended to ask the question of you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In regards to my colleague Alderman Lispar, this was talked at length during the zoning committee, I know you're not a member of it, but I will defer to Alderman Riley. But my understanding is the development team has complied legally with all the requirements. There is, there has been some comment about whether the affordable needs to be on-site or to replenish the almost extinct housing affordable funds, according to Commissioner Navarro. So we need both. And I'm not, you know, I know a number of our colleagues say, hey, the amount of money that it's generated in these downtown projects is essential, and the fact that in some of these buildings, the combination of the cost of living, as I think one of my colleagues says, they can't even, they, these residents won't be able to buy water in the commissary in the building. You know, we've got to be practical sometimes, and I know that we're challenging the housing commissioner to really try to help us move to the next level of affordability and requirements, and where our units are especially placed. And I can't speak for, I'll let Alderman Riley add to that commentary.
Alderman Riley?
Thank you, Madam President. What was also mentioned in committee was that there will be some units provided on-site, but there is a large contribution being made because of the financing of the deal. Of course, we want to see onsite units delivered, but as Alderman Tony, or Chairman Tony mentions, there's a couple of wards in the city that traditionally have funded the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, this is the primary driver of that. And I know as a policy goal for this administration, and for all of us as a city council, we want to see more onsite units delivered. But the unique financing for this project is such that they have to do a large in lieu payment instead.
I appreciate the response, and again, I, I will double-check the rules because I did not mean to ask an inappropriate question. I think it's, as we were talking about the interests of diversity within the city and applauding my colleagues for recognizing the diversity of the city, it's impossible to divorce housing needs from diversity interests. Thank you, Chair.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank, thank you, Madam President. I rise in support of this project, I supported it in zoning, and I support it today. I think, you know, Alderman Riley's done a wonderful job fighting for his community to make sure that they are fairly represented, but he hasn't lost the fact that this is impactful for the entire city. I do want to caution my colleagues who are standing up today, worrying about communities that they did not bring up yesterday in zoning. If I remember correctly, I think I was the only one who brought up ensuring that all minority communities were allowed to participate in zoning. There's always been ample opportunity to speak up and ensure that our communities have a seat at the table. It's whether or not we decide to pull the chair out and join people, that is usually the problem. I believe that not only this project, but as we did the project earlier today per emit, and as we continue to do projects where the city is putting money forward, the same conversation we're having today about a one-hundred percent privately funded venture should be applied to the conversations that we have on ventures where we are putting taxpayer dollars for, ensuring that those are also incorporating residents from every community. We didn't have that discussion earlier today, we had zero discussion on that matter when it came to the twenty-four million dollar bond issue for affordable housing a few hours ago. But now we're going to have a multi-level conversation about a seven-hundred million dollar, one-hundred percent privately funded venture in the city. At best, that's hypocritical; at worst, that is a complete missed opportunity by everyone who's worrying about communities that need resources, jobs, and contracts, as our good friend Mr. Blakemore would say. So I ask everyone who's concerned about what's going on here to keep that enthusiasm and fire going for every project that we put our dollars and resources behind, and stand today and say yes to this, and yes to all the ones coming down in the future. Thank you, Madam President.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Vegas.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. This is a project that, as a member of the Plan Commission, we had some serious discussions regarding the, the lack of participation. And although it's privately funded, this is something that, at the time, Chairman Sawyer at the Black Caucus and myself worked on, trying to get goals on privately funded projects. And at the time, we had suggested that the goal should be sixty-six percent, given the fact that the city of Chicago had a makeup of approximately a third, a third, a third. And I remember a reporter asking me, well, that's insane. I said, well, they started at zero, so I figured we could meet some, meet somewhere in the middle. And as a result of that, an executive order was put forward, it required at least thirty percent minority participation. And so, again, another message to the development, developers throughout the city of Chicago, we, we want you to build here, but we're, what we're also asking is that you be mindful and have a workforce in construction firms, engineering firms, architectural firms, made up, a team made up that's reflective of the city of Chicago. And so, I will be working with some of my colleagues from the Black Caucus and the Latino Caucus, Chairman Maldonado, as well as Chairman Urban, and other members of the, of the caucuses to, to, to try to put forward an ordinance of some sort that deals, that deals and codifies this, so that we're not having to go through this on, on every time a mega project comes forward. And so, regardless of whether it's a hundred percent funded, or there's some type of incentive, the developers and the contractors need to understand that this is a very diverse city, and the contracting world, because the contractors as well as the workforce need to be reflective, there needs to be parity and diversity, not, not, we, we can't, we can't find ourselves being pitted against one another. The African-American community and the Latino community, there's enough room for all of us. And so, I, I look forward to working with both of my colleagues in, in the, the perfect of caucuses, to put forward some language that talks about that, so that way, there's some equity in contracting and in workforce. And so, I, I want to congratulate Alderman Riley for this, for this tremendous project. It's going to change the skyline one more time, and he's, he's been working on this for over two years, with a lot of incentives, a lot of benefits for the city of Chicago. So I want to congratulate for his, congratulate him for his hard work, as well as his willingness to negotiate and put forward opportunities for, for communities that are outside of the Central Business District. And so, for that reason, I'll be supporting this project, and I urge my colleagues to support this too. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Capelman.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to make two points. One is about the MBE and WBE contracting. I, I wholeheartedly believe it needs to be increased, but I agree with Alderman Vegas, we need to create ordinances that do that. I don't want us to make up rules as we go along. There, there should be a consistent enforcement of MBE and WBE requirements across the board. That's number one. Number two, as a part of the affordable housing piece, I have affordable housing that's part of our developments, and what many of the residents in my ward, once they find out that there's an affordable housing piece, they're delighted, and they apply, and they quickly find out that they don't qualify, because you have to earn sixty percent of the area median income. And many of my residents earn thirty percent or less. So I applaud Alderman Riley and his, this development. It's going to contribute a lot more Longterm Housing Trust Fund rental subsidies for people in my ward who desperately need it, but would never in a million years qualify for onsite affordable housing that has them earning sixty percent, when they earn fifteen to thirty percent. Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Sidlaski Garza.
Thank you, Madam President. Chairman Tony, I, I was just wondering if you could speak too, I definitely am in support of this project. I'd just like to know, do you know if there's a PLA on this, is the project labor agreement has been negotiated with the Building Trades?
Chairman Garza, I'm going to ask Alderman Riley to respond to that.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, this, there will be a PLA governing this site, and this will be a Building Trades built project, as all large-scale development projects in my ward are, that is a, an absolute expectation in the Central Business District.
Thank you, Alderman Riley, congratulations.
Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Coleman.
Thank you, Madam President. I think that it's just great as one of the new Aldermen, and to witness this in committee under Chairman Vegas' leadership, and to just echo what Chairman Urban, what Alderman Scott has said, and shout out to Alderman Mitchell for bringing this to our attention, and to just make it very clear that this won't just be about minorities and diversity having construction jobs, that we will be looking forward to pre and post-construction opportunities for this historic project. Congratulations to you, Alderman Riley. I look forward to one day mimicking something like that in the sixteenth ward.
Thank you, Alderman Coleman. I'll take a, a point of pride here. Alderman Riley mentioned my name, and I will tell you most definitively, one, thanks for the hard work of Alderman Dow, Alderman Mitchell, and Alderman Vegas, and Alderman Riley's work over two years, but particularly more recently, in making sure that the developer would publicly affirm their commitment to MBE/WBE work on this project. And since you used my name, I will say, as you know, I personally became involved with this matter very recently, and grateful for the hard work that you did in making sure that the commitments that we all hold dear are reflected in this project. And I can also say to the members for whom maybe this project is something new, that our eyes will be on this project, the commitment will be met, or there will be significant consequences. But I am confident, given the stewardship of Alderman Riley, and the focus of members of the Economic Development and Zoning Committee, that we will make true and good on the commitments that this developer's made. So thank you. So Alderman Tony, I think there's a pending motion.
Madam President, I renew my motion, a passage of this item by the same motion if there's no objection with the record of Alderman Maldonado voting no.
Hearing no other objection, so order.
Madam President, point of order.
Who's speaking, please?
Alderman Hopkins, our point of order.
Yes, Alderman.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President, I didn't want to interrupt the proceedings or the debate, but I do just want to state as a matter of record that we do have a council protocol which prohibits the city council from turning into a question-and-answer session as a committee hearing would, and we seem to push that just a little bit during the previous debate. I just want to point out that that is a slippery slope, and I would hope we would all be cognizant of that going forward, that the time for question and answers is the zoning committee in this case, and that we would all be cognizant that council is reserved for statements and roll-call votes. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Chairman Tony?
Continuing on, pages six through eight contain various map amendments in the forty-second, forty-third, forty-fourth, forty-seventh, forty-eighth, and fiftieth wards. I move, I move passage of these items by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objection, so order.
Page eight contains the historical landmark designation for the Blackwell Israel Samuel AME Zion Church Building located at thirty-nine fifty-six South Langley Avenue. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objection, so order.
Page eight contains the historical landmark designation for near-northside multiple-property district and various portions of North Dearborn Street, East Erie Street, West Grand Street, or Grand Avenue, East Euron Street, West Ontario Street, North Rush Street, North State Street, and East Superior Street. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objection, so order.
Page eight and nine contains, contains various large signs over a hundred square feet in area, twenty-four feet above grade, in the second, third, eleventh, twenty-first, twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-seventh, thirty-second, thirty-fourth, forty-first, forty-second, and forty-seventh wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objection, so order.
Madam President, that concludes my report. I do want to congratulate Alderman Riley on the Tribune project, and I know that he will be a steward for all the interests of the city and its residents, and all the promises that these developers are making to our city. Thank you, thank you, Alderman Riley.
Thank you, Chairman Tony. Before we move on to further business, I want to take a moment here. May twentieth will always have particular significance for many of us. For some, myself included, we swore an oath for the first time that bestowed upon us both a great honor and important obligations. For others, you renewed your solemn vow to serve the public. So whether veteran or new to elected office, we've been on a journey together that began one year ago today, standing before all of Chicago, and now, one year later, finds us today in the middle of a challenge of a lifetime. All of us were brought together by our city's voters, our families, our residents, our communities, and business owners, who were desperate for change in the way our beloved city was run, in the way we conducted business, and above all, in how the lines of opportunity investment were drawn. That mandate was and is our mission, representing a new day for our city, one which saw us taking a new direction towards a horizon as more transparent, inclusive, fair, and prosperous for all communities, not just for the fortunate few. And with due respect to the point of order, this is exactly the kind of debate and discussion that is important for us to have. Our first moment together represented a promise we made to our fellow Chicagoans, and I am tremendously proud of the accomplishments that had followed from all of us over this past year, through historic ethics and good governance reforms, historic structural reforms, budget solutions, and unprecedented investments in our communities who for way too long, in some instances generations, have been left out and left behind. And it's because of our shared partnership and collaboration over this past year that our city government is more fair than it's ever been, more transparent, more efficient, more inclusive than ever. To the veteran Aldermen, I say this, I very much appreciate all of your hard work, your wise counsel, even when we disagree, and your daily commitment to meeting the needs of your residents and your service to this city that we all love. Thank you. And I ask our new Aldermen to share some of their personal highlights, and what they said was as varied and diverse as they all are. For Alderman Rodriguez, his highlight was helping craft and support the Fair Work Week and strengthening the Welcomeham City ordinance. For Alderman Martin- Martin, it was passing the Climate Change Emergency Declaration. Alderman hadn't cited our work in securing and stabilizing our eroding lakefront and increasing support to keep our shoreline protected, and that work is ongoing and more to come. Alderman Sichu Lopez looked to our efforts to stop predatory practices against homeowners as well as creating a community advisory council to ensure input from ordinary residents on the seventy-eight development. Alderman Gardner spoke about the compromise struck with developers at a senior living facility to bring more, specifically eleven, affordable housing units to a site which previously had none, and the creation of Gardner's Angels. Ward residents were the guardians of seniors in his ward. For Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez, this year's special mark were the actions taken to support community-driven zoning and development and the Know Your Rights canvassing we did and continue to do to protect our immigrant and refugee communities. For Alderman Taylor, it was expanding transparency in her ward. Alderman Nugent noted it was bringing in new business and securing more green space and more police in her ward and for infrastructure. For Alderman Vasquez, it was cosponsoring the LGBTQ plus business resolution along with introducing an array of programs in the fortieth ward. Alderman Laspada spoke to putting together a great team, and our teams don't get the recognition that they deserve. So thank you, Alderman, for acknowledging that. But also Alderman Laspada spoke to incorporating his community in zoning, development, and infrastructure matters. Alderman Cardona, a very hardworking man, cited his work in supporting the residents of the Cicero and George Apartments and celebrating the fiftieth anniversary of developing Asperantes. And for Alderman Coleman, it was completing tens of thousands of service requests, supporting local businesses, and organizing, ready for it, the first-ever Inglewood Town Hall with all five Aldermen representing the community participating at once. Well done. Throughout this year, we knew the importance of what we were doing and the critical work, a role this work would play in our journey ahead. But none of us could have realized just how important it would be. What began a, one year ago as a journey of transformation itself was transformed in just a matter of weeks, taking the form of an unprecedented crisis and a fight for the literal survival of thousands of our fellow residents. This stage of our journey together has left us physically apart to keep our residents safe amidst widespread job loss, hunger, and uncertainty about our future. But it's because of the gains that we made to raise more voices and lift, truly lift, our communities that we have as a city and as a governing body, been able to face this moment with strength and conviction. For all of its changes and challenges, the story of our year together has been one story of our shared singular mission to create a city where everyone has a place and no one feels alone or left behind. And that mission must continue in our years before us. The only difference now is that our mission has become more urgent and the mandate which brought us here is shining more brightly than ever, lighting our path and giving us renewed strength for our work ahead, to build on the gains we've made and write a new chapter to our city's history of resilience and rebirth, not unlike what we have gone through before. My hope is that generations from now, Chicagoans can look back on this moment with gratitude for today's Chicagoans who seize this moment as a once-in-a-generation opportunity it is. To recover, rebuild, remake ourselves as a broad-shouldered, global, welcoming city we all know it can be. Our journey together has been incredible, but it really, truly has just begun. Now, it would be natural in this time for us to reflect on what we have lost. As individuals and collectively, the list is long. Lives have been lost and shattered. Employment, fortunes, and futures seem to have disappeared in an instant. And we have not just lost our mobility, we've lost our sense of security. And you know this, and we were reminded here today during public comment, our neighbors, the people we serve, are hurting. And in this time, it is incumbent upon us to find common ground for the good of us all. But another part of our narrative during this time is what we have gained. We have been physically apart, but I think our sense of community shines through this often dark time. Over and over again, our neighbors have stepped up, reached out, and offered daily demonstrations of the true definition of public service. My hope is in our work going forward as elected officials, that we continue to follow their example of putting city over self. Thank you and God bless you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Spazata.
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to say congratulations to you and all my first-term colleagues. This is, this job is just a one-of-a-kind job of helping people. It's just unbelievable. So just want to congratulate everybody on their one-year anniversary. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. And now we'll move to the agreed calendar. Matters on the agreed calendar, Alderman Harris.
Thank you, Madam President, and congratulations on your first year as a leader of the great city of Chicago. And to all my new colleagues, I hope it's been a fabulous ride for you. Stay buckled in and tune in for the next ride on this roller coaster. I've received from the city clerk, Anna Valencia, a total of fifty-six items proposed for the agreed calendar consisting of congratulatory, commemorative, tributary resolutions from the following Alderman Hopkins, Alderman Garza, Alderman Thompson, Alderman Quinn, Alderman Burke, Alderman Lopez, Alderman O'Shea, Alderman Ramirez Rosa, Alderman Gardner, and Alderman Kappelman. Thank you, Madam President.
Do you move for a passage of the agreed calendar?
Oh, I move for passage of the agreed calendar in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. New business. The clerk will call the wards beginning with the fiftieth.
Claims, free permits, license fee exemptions, which are referred to the Committee on Finance. Zoning amendments, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Traffic regulations, traffic control signals and traffic signs, which are referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Grants of privilege on and over the public way, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. An exemption from physical barrier requirements for commercial driveway alley access for parking facilities, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Silverstein has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three to allow additional package goods licenses on portions of North Lincoln Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Gardner has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at fifty-two eleven West Lawrence Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Smith has proposed ordinance to call for ninety-day signature collection period for restricted cannabis zones to be told for during, told for duration of the Illinois Executive Order twenty twenty dash ten or applicable order and requiring the city clerk to notify petitioners of such tolling and date and time signatures must be obtained once the order expires, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Smith also has proposed ordinance for the call for the zoning board of appeals to defer approval of special use applications for cannabis business establishments where notice of intent to initiate petition process to establish restricted cannabis zones was filed with city clerk, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Riley has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at seventy-one East Wacker Drive, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Vasquez has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code chapter two dash one sixty by adding a new section two dash one sixty dash zero twenty-five concerning self-identification of gender identity on city documentation, which is referred to Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alderman Vasquez also has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code chapter eight dash thirty-two to further regulate use of mechanical equipment or tools operated by fuel or electric power in buildings, construction, repair, or demolition operations, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Vasquez also has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section ten dash twenty dash one fifty to further regulate permit requirements for emergency openings, construction, and repair work on public way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Vasquez and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code chapter two dash eight by adding a new section two dash eight dash zero fifteen to require city council to hold regular meetings on second and fourth Wednesday of every month for duration of declared disaster, which is referred to Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman, Alderman Viegas has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code titles nine and two regarding commercial towing, which is referred to Committee on Finance. Alderman Viegas also has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section eight dash four dash zero fifty-nine regarding prohibition of possession of scanners, which is referred to Committee on Finance. Alderman Wagisback has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at twenty-three sixty-six North Damon Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Burnett has proposed ordinance for release of restrictive use covenant regarding vacation of portion of West Carroll Avenue between North Sangin Street and North Peoria Street, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Burnett also has a proposed ordinance for release of restrictive use covenant regarding vacation of portions of West Carroll Avenue and North Sangin Street within the area bonded by North Monroe, North Morgan Street, West Kinsey Street, North Peoria Street, and West Waymanette Street, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Maldonado has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-two and four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three to disallow additional alcoholic liquor and package good licenses on portion of North California Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Rodriguez has proposed resolution to call for hearings to establish framework and criteria for revoking tax incentives in accordance with the Cook County Tax Incentive Ordinance, which is referred to Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Alderman O'Shea has proposed orders to call for the Department of Business Affairs and Consumer Protection to refund license fees for period attested to by businesses that did not operate for thirty or more days as a result of COVID-nineteen pandemic emergency executive order number twenty twenty dash one, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Quinn has proposed ordinance for designation of the thirteenth precinct of the thirteenth ward as a restricted cannabis zone prohibiting home cultivation and new or additional cultivation centers, craft growers, and processing, infusers, dispensing, and transporting organizations.
Hey, Cal.
Which are referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Thompson has proposed ordinance for vacation of public ways in the area bonded by West Pershing Street, West Pershing Road, South Halston Street, West Thirty-Eight Street, and South Emerald Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Sedlowski-Garza has proposed resolution to call on the Illinois General Assembly to pass and Governor J.D. Pritzker to sign into law House Bill fifty-five forty-five, which amends Cannabis Regulations and Tax Act by including additional testing to verify ownership interest of companies alleged by social equity advocates, which is referred to Committee on Workforce Development. Alderman Hopkins has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code chapter four dash three eighty-four to prohibit retail sale of dogs, cats, and rabbits, which is referred to Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alderman Hopkins also has proposed ordinance to call for a ninety-day signature collection period for restricted cannabis zones to be told for duration of Illinois Executive Order twenty twenty dash ten or applicable order and requiring city clerk to notify petitioners of such tolling, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Hopkins also has proposed ordinance for opening of the public ways in the area bonded by East Pearson Street, North Meese Vanderro Way, and East Chicago Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Laspada has proposed resolution to call for expansion of Drive Clean Chicago program to further develop clean energy fleets to meet manufacturing, land use planning, and environmentally sustainable goals, which is referred to Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy. Alderman Laspada also has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. You're right, that completes the order of business for all the medic introductions.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. When I move on to approval of the journal, Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I'm not aware of any corrections to the journal. It moved out of the approval.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Will the Aldermen please make sure that their microphones are unmuted? All those in favor of approving the journal signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say no. The motion is carried. Unfinished business, Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I'm not aware of any unfinished business.
Miscellaneous business, Alderman Mitchell.
I'm not aware of any miscellaneous business.
The date and time of the next meeting.
Provided an ordinance for clerk setting the date and time of the next meeting of the city council for Wednesday, June seventeen, twenty twenty, at ten a.m.
Mr. Clerk, please read the ordinance.
Eater name by the city council of the city of Chicago, section one. In accordance with Illinois Executive Order twenty twenty dash seven, the next regular, regular meeting of the city council of the city of Chicago shall be conducted by video conference on Wednesday, the seventeenth, June twenty twenty, beginning at ten o'clock a.m., and shall provide for remote participation and remote viewing by number of public. Section two, this order shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage.
Alderman Beal, do you wish to speak to this matter?
Yes, Madam President. I was just curious, with the state reconvening in Springfield, would our next meeting be in person or would it be another virtual meeting?
The restriction on people gathering in fifty or more still has not been lifted. So it's certainly possible that we may be gathering together in person, but we need to follow the lead of the stay-at-home order, which currently does not allow for us to gather in groups of fifty or more. But if that changes, we'll certainly notify members of the city council and make the necessary preparations.
Thank you.
Alderman Irving.
Not to this matter, but after this passes.
All right. Alderman Mitchell, do you move for passage? Hearing no objections, so ordered. Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to take a point of privilege so that we do not forget our colleague Alderman Carrie Austin, our chairman, who's at home recuperating. Did not know that she had been hospitalized, but just let's keep her in our prayers and reach out to her and just let her know that we are thinking about her.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Metz.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Just want to point out to send a congratulation out to our twenty twenty graduates, since we are not, we won't have another meeting before graduation. Thought it would be appropriate as the city council that we recognize all of the class of twenty twenty.
Thank you, Alderman Metz. Roll call on the omnibus. Will the Aldermen please make sure that their microphones are unmuted? And thank you. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Laspada.
Aye.
Alderman Hopkins.
Aye.
Alderman Dowell.
Aye.
Alderman King.
Aye.
Alderman Hairston.
Aye.
Alderman Sawyer.
Aye.
Alderman Mitchell.
Aye.
Alderman Harris.
Aye.
Alderman Beal.
Yep.
Alderman Sedlowski-Garza.
Yep.
Alderman Thompson.
Aye.
Alderman Cardenas.
Aye.
Alderman Quinn.
Aye.
Alderman Burke. Alderman Lopez.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Curtis.
Aye.
Alderman O'Shea. Alderman O'Shea. Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Brookins. Alderman Brookins.
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Aye.
Alderman Tabarez.
Aye.
Alderman Scott.
Aye.
Alderman Sichu Lopez.
Aye.
Maldonado.
Aye.
Alderman Burnett.
Alderman Burnett.
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Irvin.
Aye.
Alderman Teofiero.
Aye.
Alderman Ruboyes.
Aye.
Alderman Cardona.
Alderman Cardona.
Aye.
Alderman Wagisback.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Aye.
Alderman Austin. Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Aye.
Alderman Villas. Alderman Villas. Alderman Miss.
Aye.
Alderman Spazata.
Aye.
Alderman Nugent.
Yes.
Alderman Vasquez.
Aye.
Alderman Apolitano.
Aye.
Alderman Riley.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Tunny.
Aye.
Alderman Gardner.
Aye.
Alderman Kappelman.
Aye.
Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Osterman.
Aye.
Alderman Haddon.
Aye.
Alderman Silverstein.
Aye.
Alderman O'Shea. Alderman Villas.
Aye.
You're right, there are forty-eight ayes, no nays.
With forty-eight ayes, the matters and the omnibus have passed. Alderman Daley Thompson on the motion for reconsideration.
Thank you, Madam President. Motion to reconsider the last vote?
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. Opposed, say no.
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 The motion fails. Before we adjourn, I do want to note one thing. As you know, in the virtual environment in which we are operating, we are endeavoring not to have committee meetings overlapping. So if there are matters of interest, the agendas for the committees are posted well in advance, even if you're not on the committee, please avail yourself of the opportunity to participate, at least by Zoom, so that when it comes time to vote on a matter that you are not a part of the committee on, it will be fully advised in the particulars to allow you to vote one way or the other. Thank you. Alderman Mitchell on the motion to adjourn.
Madam President, there being no further business, the post is void. I move that we adjourn.
Will the Aldermen please make sure their microphones are unmuted? All those in favor of the motion to adjourn signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say no. The motion is carried. Counselors adjourn.